City of Pelican Rapids Council meeting of 29 June 2021 in solid order. I'd ask if you have not signed in, yet there's a clipboard at the end of the table. If you sign in before you leave this evening. Also, if you have cell phones, please put them on library. I will call a member, Danielle.
I'm Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Carla Ballard.
Here.
I'm Councilmember Corinna.
Here.
And Councilmember Steve Foster.
Yeah.
And Mayor Brad Strachan.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here in the council chambers this evening. Also, those that are joining us by Zoom. And our council meetings are shown on channel 14 on Wednesday evening. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 30th, 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. is the conversation with the mayor at historic City Hall. Thursday, July 1st, 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall Chambers is another meeting regarding our 2024 Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Project, which will be talking about the corridors of highways 108 East and West. Sunday, June, or July 4th is 4th of July, and therefore on Monday, July 5th, the City Hall offices will be closed. Our next city council meeting is scheduled for July 13th at 11:00 City Council Chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements?
Did you say the July 1 meeting was?
10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m.
What day?
This Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no more announcements. If we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd remember two as citizens' comments, and I know Judy Tabit is here to speak to us.
Judy Tabit, I'm a member of the Local Places Local Foods Group, and I want to thank the mayor and the city council for approving that Pelican Market spot for us. We opened for the first time on Friday night. Think all the vendors were very happy, so we really appreciate your support on that. And we have an intern for the summer. You may see her around. Her name is Lily, and she's been putting up a lot of the banners and doing all kinds of things. And then I have one other comment. I really think you need to seriously consider hiring somebody to help with economic development. Please. So, that's all. Brent gave me three minutes. I did okay.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else in the audience for citizens' comments? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Item number three is additions and deletions to the agenda. Any additions?
Bart Ware. Bart Ware, that's my addition.
Bart Ware.
You put it at the end.
Item number 19.
Move the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same. Motion carried. Item number four is consent, approval of consent agenda. I'll read those items. Item number 4A is approval of council minutes of June 8th, 2021. Item 4B is approval of council payable listing. Item 4C1 is liquor store report, which is in your packet. Item 4C2 is utilities report, which is in your packet. Here's a motion to approve.
Sold.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same. Motion carried. At this time, we're going to recess our city council meeting and go into our scheduled public hearing regarding HRA, and we have HRA members here this evening, also Ottertail County Commissioner Wayne Johnson. And I'm not sure who wants to take the lead on this, but go right ahead.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Barbara Dacey. I'm the executive director for the Ottertail County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And as you noted, Commissioner Johnson is here tonight. He also sits on the HRA board. And the project manager for the HRA is here, Tanya Westra, and also Community Development Agency Director Amy Baldwin. So, the reason why we're here for the public hearing is a few months ago Administrator Solga gave me a call and asked us to go out and take a look at the house at 117 Northwest First Avenue to see if that could be rehabilitated. We did do that. We did a couple of inspections and in fact determined that it needs to be taken down because it is not in a habitable condition. In order to rehab it, it would cost more than what the home is worth. So, that triggered the state requirement to have a public hearing for the city has to approve, according to state law, a resolution that says the HRA can exercise its powers. So, that's a legal phrase for buying the property, conducting testing, demolition, surveying, site improvements, and potentially redeveloping that. So, this is required by law in order for the HRA to get going on this redevelopment. And done to the next slide. The County Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Community Development Agency see ourselves as a partner with the city. These are activities that these agencies are enabled by state law to do and to work and to work with communities. So, on a day-to-day basis, we do provide technical assistance to communities in the county to support their housing issues and needs, business development, and other topics that are important to communities. And then Tanya, after our engagement with the city in the latter part of February, has started the process to submit an application to the state for the SCDP program, which is the Small Cities Development Program. And what that will do is create funding for rehabilitation of single-family homes and other structures here in the community. So, that is a competitive program, and Tanya is preparing surveys and working with city staff to get the surveys out to see what the demand is. And the tax forfeit lot that I just talked about on First Avenue, we're going to call that program a housing opportunity program where even though the home is dilapidated, the lot is of substantial size, and we would like to facilitate the construction of a new structure on that lot. And then, so with all of that, the HRA is empowered to coordinate applications for other potential resources for not only what I just talked about, but for another initiatives that the city may have in the future. So, next slide, done. So, tonight is a public hearing required by law, so you need to take comment, and I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the HRA. But the resolution that you're going to consider tonight has two parts. One, to authorize the HRA to do some of the things that I just talked about, but secondly, to authorize the Community Development Agency to carry out some of their economic development programs within the city. So, I'll just talk a little bit more about the HRA powers, and then Amy will explain about the CDA. So, in the resolution, there is an exhibit attached to the resolution that describes the activities that would happen on the lot on First Avenue. And as I mentioned before, a couple of weeks ago, we do not have a solid plan right now for the new structure on the lot, but we would come back to you for approval with a specific redevelopment plan at this time. So, the purpose of the resolution on the HRA side is to say it's okay for us to start the work to acquire the lot as a tax forfeit lot, and then to see if we can find enough funding to demolish and do all of the things that we can to get the site redeveloped. And with that, Amy, I'll let you finish up.
Good evening. So, Barbara gave a great overview of that work that the HRA is looking at pursuing here, specific areas that they're looking at supporting efforts within Pelican Rapids. And as I've talked before to you and provided information, you know, the CDA is a separate agency. We do have some shared powers with the HRA, and that's been the majority of the work, or really all the work that we have done so far in other communities, has been around those HRA powers. But the CDA is actually formed under a separate statute within the state law, which provides powers of an economic development authority. And so, we've added into, while there are no projects that we would envision those powers ever, you know, coming forth at this time within the community, but since we're having this discussion and having the review of this resolution, we have included language regarding the Community Development Agency as well to be able to undertake projects should it make sense in the future, and again, working in partnership with the community for needs that might be identified. So, as well, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that component of the resolution that would be before you this evening.
That's a resolution we won't consider during the public hearing, but for adjournment and public hearing, a reconvene or council meeting to pick that up. Are there any questions for Amy?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the public hearing open?
Yeah, the public hearing's still open.
Is Mayor Johnson going to speak?
Yes, definitely.
Mayor, council members, thanks for the opportunity. As Barbara indicated, I'm also the chair of the HRA board in Ottertail County. I just want to say that this is a great opportunity for Pelican Rapids. We have the opportunity to clean up some blight, hopefully keep a house that should not be rehabilitated and turned into a rental or something like that. Let's get it all cleaned up. Let's make that nice lot, a nicer lot, and combine, and let's partner with Ottertail County, the CDA, the HRA, the county board, and everyone else. Judy Tabit spoke towards the Economic Development Authority. I think all of this plays hand in hand. I speak for this resolution. I think it's a great opportunity for Pelican Rapids. I think it's a great opportunity to start showing what the HRA and the CDA can do in these communities. And so, with that, councilman, I encourage you to pass this resolution so that we can start to partner together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments regarding this resolution before? Anyone else? Council, if you have any questions? If there are no questions, we will then close this public hearing and will reconvene our city council meeting. So, before is this Resolution 2021-09, which was included in your packets. Because at this time, I'm looking for someone to entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll move we adopt Resolution 2021-09.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Discussion. Discussion.
Is this the house that gets sold on the Internet?
Yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same. Motion carried. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great to have this partnership. We'll move on to item number six is liquor store personnel. We have Maggie Johnson this evening. Maggie?
Thank you. Some of you may know the other month, one of our employees had gotten hurt and had to have his arm surgically repaired. We were hoping he would be able to make it back to work, but after two weeks, he had gone to the doctor, and it was stated that he wouldn't be back for six weeks. So, I had gotten ahold of Kurt after I had called Don, and he was on vacation, and Kurt was helping me because I had known somebody that was willing to step up and take the position for the summer. And he had talked to Brent, talked to Danielle, and we've got a new person onboard. It's Brian Villagomez. He started at step one. He's been there for two weeks now, and it's doing great. And again, I would like to say thank you for helping me out with that because it would have been a struggle going into the rest of the summer with only who we have. I would also like to, yes? I would also like to request that I move Tasha Osman, who is my full-time employee since December, up from level two to level three. And then, this is her halfway mark now, so I'd like to move her up to step three, and at the end of the year when it is her renewal time, to move her up to step four at that time.
Does that take council approval?
No, it's something that we've been prior to.
So, I mean, it'll, we don't have to approve it. It's going to happen.
Well, it's something that Maggie asked me about, and I thought we'd provide you this document, and we may have some more to talk about.
But we do have to approve the hire. What was the person's name that you hired?
Brian Villagomez.
Okay, we still have, we have to approve that.
And for the record, it's starting when he's 14, 25.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move we hire Brian Villagomez for the liquor store, step one. Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same. Motion carried. Thank you.
Was that a working year? Oh, okay.
Dumb kid injury. But when, is he coming back eventually?
I was talking to him today, and he says he's getting a little more flexibility in his hands, but he's still in the cast and sling.
I mean, well.
He plans on returning.
So, when he returns, is, are you going to keep Brian though also?
If I don't have to. I wasn't planning on it. Brian said he was just looking for summer work. So, I don't know if his plans will change. I don't know for sure if Mason will make it back. I don't know what the position will be in at the end of the summer. So, at the point, he's a summer help.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven is library update. Mr. President Bryan Olson.
Yes. Boy, if this hasn't been a struggle. So, we just, actually yesterday, received the punch order list. The punch list were the things they have crashed off. For the most part, the building's done. There is some cleanup that they claim they've done. I haven't checked it since they were here last, but, and neither has the architect looked at, you know, or rechecked their work. But right now, they have basically the interior, the walls that got wet, and some concrete around the building, around the, to still replace. And so, they're still on the hook for that. Right now, the way it looks, and they're, out of 19 items, they have completed 16 of them. So, we'll see. When Scott with Design Attend comes and checks it out, we will look at it, and we'll go through that together. But this is, this is what we got. We emailed them last week, said we need something from you to, you know, the council wants some information. This is what we got. So, we will be looking and, you know, checking it out and making sure and holding them to it, so.
Were neighboring properties on that punch list?
Yes. And that's what some of the concrete is, neighboring, neighboring properties, and other things in the neighboring properties, so. And they're well aware of it, so.
But you don't know when they're coming back?
They don't like to share their timeframe with us, and we have emailed them several times and called them, and so, that is, that's where that's at right now, to keep you up to date. We also have never, just for the record, we've still only paid them that one pay request. So, there's, there's still quite a bit on the table for them to want to come back and finish, so.
Don't set on you, Brian.
No, I won't.
Any questions for Brian on this topic?
When were they here last?
They were here, 6/1 was the last time they were here, so, is what, according to their dates on this, on the punch list, so.
So, when did they give you the punch list that says all these things are completed?
Yesterday. To be exact, so, and, right. So, that's what I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any more questions? If not, excuse me, we'll move to item number eight.
Pool personnel? Pool personnel, yes. So, just a quick side note, the pool is open. It's been busy with, it opened last Wednesday, it's the first day when it was nice, and it's been busy. We had seven guards scheduled to take the lifeguard training, six of them were there, so now we have a total of seven guards that are working. And as of right now, they are all able to fill the hours that were open. So, there may be a sporadic day here and there, but it's nothing that will really affect the whole summer hours there. But the two extra guards that I did not hire previously are Chloe Paulson and Callie Hanson, and they are at the first year of $11.08, so that will bring us to seven guards, if I can get them approved.
I'll move we hire Tori and Ally.
Chloe.
Chloe and.
And Callie.
Okay. Close, close, close. All right. One second. Okay, we have a motion. Motion and a second. Discussion. What was the wage again? Discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same. Motion carried.
And one more thing. We do have a water safety instructor who took that class, one of our current employees, so we will have swimming lessons starting next week. So, just in case anybody asks.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a park board grant, and we have members of the, we have Kate here. Low Ranger. Okay.
I have three items very quickly to go through for the park board. The first is a grant for bike racks. It is through Partnership for Health. I kind of, the park board moved forward on applying for it, and within it, we wrote contingent upon city council approval, just because it was due in June. In the meantime, we submitted it to Partnership for Health, and the turnaround time was super quick, and we actually got it. So, I'm here to ask for allowing us to receive that grant. It is for $2,115.49, and that allows us to get three custom Pelican Rapids bike, you can see them right there in your picture, bike racks for our trailhead at Veterans Memorial Park. The design.
Three of them.
Three of them, yep. And the design, as you guys know, is made by Paul Johnson, our local artist, and we had called him, and he, I didn't know if he needed to approve it again, if the city owned it, but he was excited about it, so. That, so that's the first item that I was here for, to, I guess, accept that grant.
Is there a motion to approve the park board receiving this?
Second.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Boop.
We had some discussion.
Oh, definitely. Does the park board know where we put the rack?
It just, within the grant was for the trailhead area, so there's not any specific location yet. No, wait, no.
How do the bikes go on this rack?
Um, just as, yep, so it holds two bikes each comfortably. So, as you can see, the bike on the side there, it lines up kind of parallel with it, so one on one side, one on the other.
Okay. Was there any councilmen opposed to this? I'm going to pass.
The next item was the park board just wanted to publicly thank Lake Region Electric Company. So, if you guys noticed, the arch downtown for the Pelican Market, that was installed, as you know, by Lake Region, and so the park board reached out if they had ever be willing to make another one free of charge for the entrance of our trailhead, I'm not trailhead, I'm sorry, piece trail. And it was like immediate response back that they'd be willing to, and so we just wanted to thank them. We've met with them in the park last Friday just to go over location, so we just thought it would be a beautiful addition to the trailhead to kind of have some signage eventually to, to put there and have it show off more. So, but Lake Region is doing that free of charge and materials and everything and labor, so that was pretty cool. The last thing was about the senior center, the former senior building, and this is park board, but it also, I'm speaking on behalf of Local Foods Local Places, so I'm just going to read it if that's okay, because I just, I'm not on that committee, but this is emailed from them and the park boards. I just don't want to misspeak at all. So, "The park board would like to have the old senior center building fall under our umbrella. We have been working to further develop the trailhead at Veterans Memorial Park, and this would be a perfect addition. We see this building as an inclusive community space with future goals that would include, but not be limited to, public bathrooms, a commercial kitchen, and interior space to be rented for meetings, birthdays, and gatherings, while still being respectful of other community groups such as Meals on Wheels. The park board has also met with Local Foods Local Places Committee, and both groups agree our goals are in line with one another, and it would be mutually beneficial for the park board to have oversight of the old senior building. Currently, the building is unusable as the bathrooms are not ADA compliant amongst other things. As a committee, we would develop future plans for the facility and then present our recommendation back to the city council for approval. The park board would also be willing to seek and apply for grants. Additionally, Local Foods Local Places Committee shared they have access to resources for USDA's architectural services, which are available free of charge to communities that are working on developing or renovating community facilities. They spoke with two architects last week and learned that they can create designs for the senior center building, including not just the commercial kitchen, but other uses of the space, including the rest of the interior and immediate exterior. They said that the process typically takes about two months from the time that the architects receive the information they need to move forward, which would be four plans and photos of the space. They can provide design services, but once it gets to the point of electrical and plumbing, we'd need to hire someone else to get specific cost estimates. Local Foods Local Places has also identified at least one grant that the city would be eligible to apply for through USDA rural development. It's the community facilities grant. This could potentially provide up to 75% of the project's overall cost, and it didn't specify up to what amount. They are also reaching out to other communities that have gone through a similar process to see if they are willing to share about their experiences, best practices, lessons learned, and other grants that we could apply for. Local Foods Local Places also stated that they're more apt to get grants if the park board has oversight of the building, showing it's an inclusive facility for all community members. The park board sees the older senior center building as an inclusive welcoming place for all community members. We want to gain oversight of this facility while working with groups such as Local Foods Local Places and Meals on Wheels to make sure all voices are heard in the planning. Each step, we would bring back our recommendations to the city council for approval before moving forward with anything.
So what you said was you're looking for the senior citizen building to fall under the park board. What is, what is the procedure for that? 'Cause I don't know.
To me, I see it as basically, I think, like the park board oversees the park, their advisory committee oversees the park, that type of thing, and I think this would probably just fall under that type of, uh, jurisdiction, whatever, that they would just oversee, like she had talked about, uh, as far as the USDA plan and grants, all that type of stuff. Um, I did have some communication with, uh, Emily, the guy that, that they were talking to USDA about, and, and so, I don't know necessarily about them. The park board, I, if they have oversight, the grants are stronger, but I do know that a lot of the grants now, they, the application have a lot of questions, a lot of areas where you have to talk about, how is the community involved in being a part of the decisions on how this, how this building is going to be used, the development of it, stuff like that, which is typically, you, you, prior to, um, the last couple of years, you really do see those types of components, right? So, that is given more and more in the grant application. Uh, so having them play a role in, in making sure that the community is involved in, in the development of the plan and stuff, I don't see a bad side to that. I don't know what technically, what they mean, or what's in the park board, um, in their mind as far as if they're overseeing that building, if that, what that means, I'm not sure. Because obviously, anything that happens down to that building has to go through the city council.
Right, yeah.
So, them having oversight on it.
I'm both saying that happened with the park board still.
Right, and that's correct, and so with, when we met with Local Foods Local Places at the last meeting, um, they just said, so, they're not coming to, we're not coming to, we would meet together to form kind of collective, um, ideas, and then the park board would be the people to come to you.
Is the park board, they're kind of in not control, but in control of Historic City Hall as well, right? It doesn't fall under there?
Nope.
So.
It used to, but no.
What's that?
It, it used to, but when I was on, I haven't had anything with it.
Why would that have been taken out of the park board's portfolio?
Changed here.
It was before me, I don't know.
It wasn't, um, wasn't just when it was, when we partnered with Lakes Area, whatever, that year. Was it coming? I, I don't, I don't recall, I don't recall there ever being, the senior, I'm going back and digging, I don't recall where the park board was officially removed from, unless it was a request by the park board that they didn't want to be able to hold the scene down, that structure, that use of that building.
Getting back to the senior citizen building, I know Local Foods Local Places was instituted in Pelican Rapids because of West Central Initiative, they took the lead on that, and both those organizations have a lot of contacts, where they can find grants for things that could possibly happen at senior citizen building, which has now won by the city. Council, have any questions, or?
Does it take action to?
I suppose.
Give them?
I suppose we should officially in the minutes.
If you want to make it, you know, in a sense, part of the art structure of the city, um.
That's what we're looking for, to get it approved.
I think we should, so, it's officially in their city.
But the one thing that I think, as they go forward, they, they start thinking about developing new plans and working with USDA, I think there has to be a lot of communication to the city council, 'cause you guys are way exactly what you're talking about, because from my, from my understanding, under that, the, the technical support that the USDA can give under that, their program, is they can basically sit down and help them figure out what they'd like to see in there, as, as far as commercial kitchen, what might be in that commercial kitchen, how the other stuff might be, um, all the way to the point where they now have a vision for that building, but when we actually want to start putting plans and specs and visible documents together, they, they basically provide a product that would be able to just be turned over to an architect to develop all that stuff that could, you know, if a model is put, more or less put together, in a plan set. They won't do architectural plans, they, from what I understand, and they surely don't do visible documents and that type of thing. That's all that has to be done by an actual architect. But we did talk about, I mentioned a few, leading back from when we were getting the building, that we were gonna have to hire an architect to figure out what has to be done for that building to make it ADA compliant, and if we're gonna have a commercial kitchen and that type of thing. So I understand that, um, Local Foods Local Places has reached out to USDA and had some conversations with them about the services they could provide to help develop a plan or the vision for that building, so for them guys to work with the park board to do it. I don't see anything wrong with it, I just don't know what it means in my own.
So were you willing to make a motion, Mr. Val?
Yeah.
What is your motion?
I don't know. Um, I guess, I, I move that we, uh, place the senior center building under the park board, or within the park board's portfolio.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, don't, don't sit on it. Uh, we got the minutes of the park board in our packet, and we need to approve them. Are there any questions for Kate on those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Go move.
Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Can we do eleven, as long as she's there? Can we do eleven, as long as she's there?
Yes, that's what we're gonna do. Read my mind. Uh, item number eleven is pool amenities update, and I'm gonna turn this over to Don first, uh, and then I'm gonna do his Kate here on this.
Mark's actually, I mean, I'll, I'll be here.
And, oh, Mark's here too, yeah.
I know it's in my, I just submitted.
Okay, your name wasn't on the agenda.
We changed it up. No, she was in DC.
I just submitted the form and I was on.
She was in DC, you win.
So, I was contacted by the architect, because part of his proposal that he gave to the city, that the city council approved, was to develop a model that would be put together, and, and that would be used to show, you know, the pool as a whole, the plan would be meant to be, and every, and every aspect of it. But also, that model would be used by the different vendors that he's gotta hire, subcontractors, the designers that he has to hire to, um, design the pool, because you've got, uh, a company that puts, to design the pool together, you've got a company that puts, kind of, designs the amenities or that type of thing. And so the architect wanted, he, he got ahold of me, and he asked me to, uh, just, just, because the budget is starting to get a little bit tight, from his perspective, on what he's gonna be designing by detection, and he wanted to just have the pool committee and the city council take one look, so everybody understands what amenities are in this design, and if nothing's changing, we do all the same things we've talked about, the same things that are in the, the budget estimate, so he just wanted us to go through it one more time, and then I would do that to him, uh, tomorrow, and just let him know that, yes, we're on board, we're on the same page, and we're all going forward with the same, talking about the same stuff. So, what I had at, put in the, put in the packet, or what I'm showing on the screen, is those, those amenities, and I don't know if you want to add more, or if you want to start going through these, or?
No, that covers pretty much most of it. The only thing I'd add is the cost didn't go up, it's just the architect wanting kind of a final go ahead before starting their process.
Price remains the same.
Yeah, as far as the amenities and things, it's still.
Okay, so, so basically, what we're looking at in the layer in the packet too, is the first slide is basically, is, is the slide, uh, the water slide, it's, it's the same thing that we've been talking about, the main plan the whole, the whole time. Um, uh, so, any questions on the slide? And then, the next part of it is just kind of, the next two slides actually are just showing different angles of, of the amenities in there. So this is the splash pad, this is the zero entry, um, you know, the small slides are the little kids that, you know, can't get on the big one, they kind of just show us a different type of, of water elements in this splash pad. Mark, you have anything you want to add, but, uh, about this splash pad, or, or, any questions on this?
This is the portion that makes it technically ADA compliant, correct?
Correct.
And, yeah, let me go to the last one, and just another, just another angle of it, but it shows the, the, the little, the zero entry, the, the landing for the, the small slides and stuff like that, just from the backside, you kind of see, you know, how they get up on it and that sort of thing. But the biggest thing about, about this in my mind is, these elements, which were always in the design, the prices, they're all the same, you know, just won't more look at it, but these are the elements that are gonna bring the kids for, for school, the splash pad, uh, components, the water slide, um, so, you know, he just wanted, again, to have one last look, to make sure that the council understands, the park, the pool committee understands, that these are the elements that now we can go forward, the council's saying, yeah, we all, you know, we understand, we, we can go ahead and move forward, and just, uh, the, the documents put together, the models put together, um, I guess that's, that's all I have to share, I don't know, hopefully, the, the, your recommendations to the council on it?
Yeah, so this is, the, the pool committee is just kind of recommending the council, uh, give the final go ahead for this architect, so he, they can start their process to get this moving forward and, and lead towards the bidding process that we're all anxiously waiting for.
And you have approved, approved his proposal, you have approved the different plans and options and all that stuff in the past, he just wanted to basically, since we had gotten these together, he wanted to have one last look at it, because if we go forward and he puts all this together, and then there's a change of mind, his costs are gonna go up, we have to go back and redo the documents and the models, so.
So this, a gen item is more or less a communication.
Yeah, the architect requested it. Uh, it's probably a part of their process from, maybe their experience, they just like to have it brought to the council to just make sure beforehand, it could be the budgeting end of it.
Does it require more from them? Not really.
No, it doesn't. Well, I, I would like to see the council take some more, same, yeah, we, we'll finally be amenities shown, and, and, and go forward with, uh, the modeling and everything, you know. 'Cause really, this is the first time you guys have seen this in this type of a format. There's little pieces and parts of it before, or on, uh, including the model, you thought of, you know, the document that was done, picture that was done, you kind of got to see it, but this is really good, you can even now, and flat rate into the model that we're gonna do.
And, and the results of that is how we find out on end price points and the whole bidding. That's, we gotta get to the bidding by, through this, correct?
Yes, and when he gets that model done, the, the pool committee and the council will see that too, prior to actually going on to bid.
I make a motion to have the architect move forward.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is the same, motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number twelve, is Highway fifty-nine, twenty twenty-four project discussion. We have Tom Pace here from Mid-Not. Before I turn the microphone over to Tom, I just want to highlight a few, uh, talking points of how we got this far, and where we're heading, and what needs still to be done. Uh, well, though Mid-Not has a, uh, construction repair schedule for all their highways within the state of Minnesota, and we know this is slated for twenty twenty-four, and through all the branches leading out of Pelican Rapids, and the dates thereafter, there'll be more road construction done. Uh, the city has actually prompted Mid-Not to, you know, to go ahead with this twenty twenty-four project on a, on schedule because of our concern about our underlying water and sewer mains that are deteriorating, and we all remember back to the, was it, four or five Christmas Eves ago, when there was a water main break at the intersection of fifty-nine and one oh eight east, and it, traffic had to be detoured, uh, around Pelican Rapids, and it, it took a few weeks, and, uh, it cost the city over a hundred thousand dollars at that time, and the, the water mains are still there, probably waiting to erupt in some other point. This does not just happen in the winter time, but it, it can happen in our busy summer season as well. So that's why we want, we prompted them to go forward with this project. Had a meeting with Tom last week, and, uh, I asked the question, does the city need to vote to approve the Mid-Not City Partnership on the twenty twenty-four Complete Streets Project, and he says, this will come to a vote. So I asked, what if, you know, what if the, what if it isn't approved, or if it's voted down, and, uh, at that point, the action from Mid-Not would be to, uh, do a mill and overlay on all of Highway one oh eight and fifty-nine that are not downtown. Downtown, they'll do a, they'll pull up the concrete and replace the concrete. Uh, the parking and driving lanes will be, as we saw on the demonstration project, uh, twelve-foot driving lanes, uh, ten-foot parking lanes. We have to remember that, uh, the standard from Mid-Not is, uh, eleven-foot driving lanes and nine-foot parking lanes, so they are actually giving us a foot more of driving surface and parking surface. Uh, the sidewalk will be extended to two feet as that, uh, proposed, uh, shared use path is, and we do have a shared use path now, and bicycles right up and down our sidewalks, so that won't change. Um, roundabouts will be installed at that point. Uh, the city, uh, storm sewer pipes and catch basins will be repaired, replaced by Mid-Not, and also ADA upgrades will take place. Uh, so therefore, the city would be responsible for all the excavation to get to our water and sewer pipes, to replace them, while if we agree to this mutual agreement, Mid-Not would, uh, excavate halfway down to our water and sewer pipes and share that cost. So the act, uh, city council action to vote yes, the Mid-Not will remove the existing cement sidewalks, all the driving surfaces, uh, and approximately half the soil, so the city could replace our water and sewer mains and sewer, and water services. So when voting yes, this would save the city millions of dollars. Otherwise, we're, we're gonna have to pick up that expense ourself, which would be very costly. Uh, there, there will be no vote tonight on this. Uh, we still haven't looked at the highways, uh, one oh eight east and west corridors at this point, which we will do on this Thursday here at City Hall at ten AM. In, in the future, uh, before us will come an official resolution to participate, and also eventually a municipal consent hearing will be held, where the vote will take place at that time. And that'll be after the layout is finalized by Mid-Not, what the city and, uh, Mid-Not and the community agrees upon, and also the actual cost estimates. So we aren't quite there at this point, we still have a long ways to go.
You just told us they're gonna put roundabouts in. You just said it, you said that they're gonna, so that's already been decided, they're putting roundabouts in.
Oh, no, it hasn't been decided.
Well, you just said that.
No, the mutual consent to, to participate.
If we, if we don't, if we don't agree to that, they're going to mill and overlay and put roundabouts in.
We'll let Tom address that, you can, you can have him.
So that's already been decided?
No, if we vote yes, we only pay for half the excavation if we vote.
I don't care, I don't care who pays for what, you just said.
Well, yeah, I did say that, yeah.
They're putting, so that's, the, the plan has already been decided of them.
Well, you can address that to Tom.
Oh, I will.
So at this time, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to Tom, who is District Four Project Manager from Mid-Not up in Detroit Lakes, and he'll give us a recap of the two demonstrations, uh, parking and driving surfaces in the downtown area and all. the parking and driving surfaces in the downtown area, and also the, oh, that was the end of Fourth Street Northwest, uh, near West Central Turfies. Tom?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council members, my papers, this is a steep one, it's over here. So Brent just said a mouthful, let's just dive down right away. Let's, let's ask some of these questions that Brent threw out there, and that's, that's a wrestle before I dive into the demo projects. So Brent was correct on just about everything he said there. Um, this, this is an opportunity for the city to partner with Mid-Not in the project in 2024. He was not quite correct in the fact that this wasn't even a program until the city approached Mid-Not to do this work in 2024. It was scheduled for 2028-ish, sometime in there, based on the road conditions and everything in downtown. Once the city approached Mid-Not and said, like he said, our, our facilities are failing, we're spending lots of money to, to replace these, not sure long they'll last, Mid-Not did take a look into it, we, we found some money, we advanced the project quite a few years to work with the city to address the city utilities as a partnership project. The question that you were asking, Kevin, is about the mini roundabouts? That is a piece of the puzzle, I keep saying, which I know you, you'd like to joke about, but it is. If, you know, going through Pelican Rapids right now, you, you have fifty-six feet from curb to curb to curb, uh, twenty-eight feet from center line to the edge of curb, that way exceeds Mid-Not standards. Uh, the Mid-Not standards, as we design projects, new or replacing, we bring them all back down to Mid-Not standards. Um, our, our design policy, which we follow based on FHWA guidelines, as well as our design engineering expertise, is we have a range to work with, based on ADT, based on truck volume, based on everything else. Pelican Rapids, um, like Brent mentioned, that the, the essential office recommendations is eleven feet driving and nine feet parking. Working with our local partners, with you, as well as our local district staff, we were able to, to recommend twelve foot driving and ten foot parking based on a lot of rural needs that we see down here. District Four, we like to strive for twelve foot driving and ten foot parking, which is the max for, for our lane width. Everything in our Mid-Not project, whether it be sidewalk, or streeters path, or curb, everything has a max and a minimum. And the sidewalk has to be six feet for door swings, five feet for par, there's lots of numbers we have out. Everything on a, on Mid-Not trunk highway has guidelines and has, has, has to meet Mid-Not approval, which actually has to meet FHWA, WA approval, Federal Highway Administration approval, because they're paying for a lot of project. So we have federal guidelines we follow, as well as Mid-Not guidelines. So if we're coming through with your project or not your project, we're going to bring our lanes in to meet, to meet Mid-Not standards. If we're doing that, we're bringing our curb lines in, which is going, you know, six feet because of the curb line adjustments. If we're doing that, then we're redoing our stormwater sewer, which is by the curb. Now, those are being moved over to a new curb line. So if we're doing that, then we're going through the intersection, which needs to be, which needs some work done to them. Maybe not today, but in the future. Currently, today, our, our level services, which our design reports show, it meets current standards and it functions properly. But in twelve to fifteen years, it's, it's going to fail. If Mid-Not's coming into town in 2024 to redo our downtown section, we're not going to come back in fifteen years and redo it again, we want a long-term fix. So our goal is come in here, do it one time, disrupt businesses, whether it be one years, two years, whatever it is, do it also last forty to fifty years. And that involves looking towards the future. We know that the, the signal systems are going to fail in fuck fifteen years, and they're going to fail miserably in, in twenty-five years. So we do nothing now, and the city does it on their own in twenty years, or we do it right this time in 2024, so it's good enough for, you know, twenty plus fifty, who knows, a long, long time. We have oodles of studies, data, which I know a lot of you just don't believe in, that shows that mini roundabouts exceed signal systems in every aspect possible. Pedestrian safety, vehicle safety, cars crash, everything is out there, there is no benefit to keeping a signal system, but a mini roundabout, or a smaller roundabout, is going to function better in every aspect. It's going to save the state money, it's going to save the city money. You know, a big job part as, as Mid-Not, everybody else is, we have to be fiscally responsible. It doesn't make sense to spend, you know, three hundred thousand dollars more for a signal system when it's going to fail, it's going to function worse, and I propose a mini roundabout. You know, that's, that's, that's a lot of money. That's a, that's a big part of everything we do is, is financial responsibility. Everything has a cost to it. So you pay for it now, or you pay for it later. And later, it'll cost a lot more than it pays, it's going to cost in 2024. I mean, I'll sled back into the demo project, so we're talking about mini roundabouts, the last Thursday, we stuck one out in, you know, the Turkey Plant Parking Lot, that mini roundabout was the exact same size that's being built in downtown Pelican Rapids, right, right to the foot, the exact same size, which is pretty cool to see that out there. You know, it was, it's bigger than people think it is. And comparing that to Detroit Lakes, everybody likes to do that, the, the DL one is thirty-six feet center island, the one we proposing is fifty feet, the one in Detroit Lakes is seventy feet outside, you know, curb line, the one we're proposing is ninety feet. It's a lot bigger than what's in Detroit Lakes. You know, some people that were here drove that mini roundabout last Friday, I missed you last Thursday, you know, and those that, vehicles, no issue whatsoever. We saw people pulling trucks and, you know, and trailers and small trailers, no issue whatsoever. Full-size samhs can make it, no problem. Buses can make it, no problem. Fire trucks, no problem. You know, there was a, first a, a big spreader came through that was twelve feet wide, didn't even touch the curb lines, drove around, no problem whatsoever. You know, so it's, it's a, it's a nice improvement for downtown Pelican Rapids if, you know, if people want us to accept it. They don't, because it's, it's, it's different, it's a change. People don't like change, that's the way it is. You know, every roundabout we put in across the state, people argue against it, it's the worst thing in the world, it's going to cause death and havoc, and people are going to crash, and it's going to be mayhem. After they're done, yeah, these things are awesome, because they work for, they do work for safety, improve all aspects of safety, they do roof vehicles much, much faster, there's no delays, but there is, there is a learning curve to them, people have to learn how to drive them, and that's what people are afraid of, is, is something new. Uh, we had two vehicles go through that struggled, the first time the bus went through the right turn, he struggled with, because it's, it's different, you have no, you have to go up hard enough to make that right turn. Left turns, you make, do super easy. The full-size semi went through there, spun about around, didn't even touch the curb line hardly, you know, so it's really, really good. And the, the big wide load that came through, ninety-foot long truck with low boy, he made it, he made the turns, he went slow, but he made them. And then the one semi took a, you know, he had to back up because he, he was inexperienced at it, he was inexperienced driver, I'm guessing he probably struggled driving in the intersection in town the way he made that, made, made his turns. But like everything else, you know, there's a learning curve to it, and, and it is different. You know, as far as the Mid-Not's, you know, saying yes for putting in mini roundabouts, from our standpoint, they'd be dumb not to. It'd be, it would not be a smart financial decision, it would be, not be, would not be a smart engineering decision to ignore the obvious, what some of our data shows nationwide, not just Minnesota, it's nationwide, that roundabouts are very, very effective at everything. And then every aspect of it is way better than this faraway stop, to the signalized intersection, you know, data is just there. Crashes go down, everything goes down, it just, it would not be, make sense in our point not to, not to put them in. Now, as far as the lane width discussion, which I know there's been a lot of that, what around the city, um, yeah, we have, most we can do is twelve foot driving and ten foot parking. And what we built last two weekends down there is twelve foot parking, excuse me, twelve foot driving and ten foot parking. I mean, that is built in every city across, you know, Minnesota, even smaller. There are tons of eleven foot driving lanes across this, across the state. You know, downtown Alexandria, which is way more cars than you do here in Pelican Rapids, has eleven foot driving lanes and seven and a half foot parking. And that is, that is tight. Of course, they have, they have full lanes of traffic, so it's a little bit different, but they have way more cars, a lot more narrow parking lane than we do in Pelican Rapids. And again, it's, it's just different. I mean, Pelican is used to having twenty-eight feet from center, center of the road to the curb, which is really, really, really wide, and it's too wide. People complain about people going through town too fast. People complain about people take a long time to cross the street. And also having a standard road with our side streets or sidewalks being where the bump outs, that sort of thing, a shorter cross, ways to cross it, it's a safety benefit to the pedestrians as well. And having vehicles parked there, we saw it the last two weeks, I'm sure people drove through town, people do slow down. You come to a bump out where there's cones there, and parking is closer, vehicles do slow down. And that's, that's a, a safety benefit to having standard lanes. So I kind of settled a lot there, I'm sure there are some questions.
Questions from the council?
So is, the roundabout option is the only option right now that is being engineered?
It's, no, we have other options, the mini roundabout one is the best one. It's the best for cost, it's the best for safety, it's the best for engineering. Yeah, the, the three-legged, you know, left-turn lane option has been considered as well, that one, you're going to have more parking stalls, you moved on, on trunk highway, I mean, no, parking is a, is a major concern for people that lose parking. Um, you're right, you know, comment we heard, which is, is true, is that there will be some parking impacts at the quadrants. And we, we can minimize them to a certain degree, once we get into, into file design, if we can reduce some of our radius points, reduce some of our engineering, maybe reduce some of the parking stall impacts. But currently, there is fourteen in Highway 59 that would be lost with our mini roundabout design. If we do a left-turn lane design, there'd be over twenty lost, because our lanes are being shifted over. You know, so that's, has parking impacts as well. And it would not function as well as a mini roundabout. People still run stop signs, people still run signal systems, you know, people still crash. There was a ped crash here, a serious injury where a left turner hit a pedestrian at this 108 East intersection. Yeah, another huge point for mini round, I can go on, on for a long time about the mini roundabouts is, but, you know, the, the conflict points at the intersection with a signalized, there's thirty-two points of conflict. You pull up, you're looking left, you're looking right, you're looking, the cars coming to cross, that's a lot of places to hit people. With a mini roundabout, you're down to eight, only just people that go the same direction all the time, you stop and look, and you take, you go right.
Back up with that, too.
Yeah, yeah. At a signalized intersection or a stop sign, there are over thirty-two points of conflict. You pull up, you, you go left, you go right, you have, everybody's coming to cross, everybody's coming in different directions. In a circle, they're all going the same direction, you look one way and you go. It's, it's, you think about that for a second.
I haven't figured it out.
When you stop, you, you're looking at the light, you're looking at the stop sign, you're timing it, okay, red, yellow, go! Everybody, everybody does that, you know, you see it all the time, I'm sure Jeff sees it all the time, too, in downtown, people are watching the lights, you're not watching pedestrians, you're not watching people on bicycles, you're not watching other cars, you're watching at the lights, and you, then you go as fast as you can. At a mini roundabout, there are no lights. You pull up, you look at a car, you make the corner, oh, is a person crossing the street, so you stop and watch the person crossing the street. Ped safety is, and it's, the stat shows that seven percent of people yield to people walking across the street at a, a, a signal, a signalized intersection, seven percent. Eighty-three percent yield to people in a mini roundabout, because you see them. You make the corner, they're in the crosswalk, you see people, so you stop and let them cross the street. It's, it's, it's mind-boggling, the, the safety impacts of mini roundabout, it's, I mean, there's tons of data out there, don't, don't take my word for it, I mean, look it up and Google it, you'll get more stuff you can dream about, you know, go to Mid-Not site, go to FHWA site, look at mini roundabouts, full-size roundabouts, the benefits are there, and it's, people just have to accept that, that change, that it's there, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Ask them, I'm here, I'm here all day, so. I can sit here for hours talking about the benefits of them if you.
You might be, too.
You don't want me to, but just think about it, you know, if you want, I'll come down anytime you want me to be here, I'll come see you, Kevin.
I want to, I want to go through the process again.
Sure.
So, you guys, you meaning Mid-Not.
Mid-Not.
Mid-Not will present their final engineering plan.
Yep.
The council either approves it or not approves it? That, if we approve it, we go, the, the project goes forward, and we get our little sidewalks paid for, and we get the, you guys get to pay for most of the digging for our, for our sewer. If we don't approve it, you will mill and overlay and put the roundabout, and follow your plan anyway.
Yep.
So.
Keep going, keep going, I got you, man.
Really, what we're approving is who gets to pay for our little sidewalks?
Incorrect, that's incorrect. So Mid-Not will do everything on our trunk highway, and we're going to come in, like you say, we're going to do what we feel is best for our trunk highway. The trunk highway system that Mid-Not is responsible for, because we own it, is to get traveling people from A to B, whether it's Fergus Falls to Winnipeg or vice versa. You know, that is to get services and goods from point A to point B. That, that's our, that's our, that's our, our mobility, that is our, our model per se, that's what we do. We're coming through Pelican Rapids, we're going to do what we feel is best for Pelican Rapids. In Pelican Rapids, our infrastructure, our stormwater is, is failing, just looks like your sanitary water and sewer is, our road is falling apart, our bridge needs some work. We're going to come through, we're going to do our bridge. And, and now it's going to be in, in, in 2024, it wasn't in 2024, but now it is, because now I have a consultant hired who I'm paid to design this thing, the wheels are in motion. So if we're to come through, we're going to do our project, the city has the opportunity to partner with Mid-Not to replace the sanitary water at the same time. So if, if the city was to partner with, with Mid-Not and do the sanitary water at the same time, they're going to do, they're going to pay for everything down below, the, the, the city will pay for the engineer to design the sanitary water and sewer, which is failing, Mid-Not's going to pay for everything above the, the grading grade. We have a cost policy which is really detailing and very, it's, I can't explain it today because there's a lot of details in there, but it explains everything on, on the highway, what Mid-Not will pay for, and the city will pay for. If, since we are partnering with the project, everything above a certain point, Mid-Not will pay for, will pay for, everything above is called a grading grade, which is that the slight granular, the class five, the concrete, the bituminous, all through town. And if you don't partner with us, you do, and you, you have, you could not do your project, you could not do your water and sewer, you're going to sit there and take a risk it's going to fail, and then come back and do it again, that's, that's your choice. You don't have to partner with Mid-Not on this. And if you don't, and your stuff fails, you do your project in twenty-six, and yes, you will come through and do your work, you're paying everything to the surface, because you are under, you are on Mid-Not right-of-way by permit, that the city is. Mid-Not owns the right-of-way, we own everything above it, you are there by permit. So everything, you have to follow our Mid-Not guidelines and to replace your stuff under our roadway. So I. Yep.
Yeah, my question is, I know there's been a lot of planning by Mid-Not in moving this project into 2024 to accommodate us. If the council decided not to do, you know, they didn't want to partner with you, but we still wanted to do our work in 2024, would you guys think when you do your project, to do it in a later, in a later year, or?
We could. That's a possibility, right? The funds are, are tied to twenty-four now, and if, if you don't do them in twenty-four, I guarantee those fifty projects want this money. This money is hard to come by, people want the money to do this project. We have allocated almost fifty million dollars to do this project in twenty-four and twenty-five. If Mid-Not does not work with a partner, we do our work, we're done in one year, we can do our work in one season only. It's taken two years because of the city utilities is driving the two-year part of this project. It's not Mid-Not's work on top, it's the stuff down below, which is very time-consuming and slow process. Basically, you're moving dirt four times down below, and that's very slow, and it's a, it's a lot to do. So we could, we could come in, do our work in one season, do all of it, and be out of here, and not be back for forty, fifty years, and that'd be fine with us. But if the city wants to partner with us and take the benefit of having Mid-Not pay for the top portion, then, you know, that's, you're a call, but that's a very wise decision by the city council, because you, you're, you'll, you'll spend, I don't know, ten to twelve million dollars doing, without Mid-Not's support. Because everything, because you're going up and down, you're tearing up all the surfacing, all the sidewalks, you put your stubs into the buildings, and all of the, the houses along the corridor, you're basically turning the whole thing up again. You know, and so that's, you know, that's just my opinion, you know, you do what you want to do, but it comes, it comes down to dollars, it really does, dollars and cents.
So what we're really trying to figure out is, when will we put the roundabouts in? Not if, when, whether it be 2024 or 2028 or next week?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
You know, I mean, maybe, you know, if, if, if this city decides not to partner with us, you take it back to district manager, we say, if I have to go back to twenty-eight, we'll pull out of here, we'll come back and down the roadways.
Then in twenty-twenty-eight.
Maybe.
My, my question is, is the, is the, is the, is the problem the roundabouts, or is the problem the whip? I mean, those are.
Well, my, my problem, my question is, is the people that are pushing the roundabouts, are they really concerned with the community of Pelican Rapids? Or are they worried about paying for the sidewalks, for our multi-use paths, and for our other, other amenities that we're trying to add on? I have a hard, I've, honestly, I've been talking to people, I've been asking people, and I really want to be on the right side of this argument. And I cannot, I've yet to, to have a conversation with somebody, anybody, I mean, other than Tom, that is, I want roundabouts in Pelican Rapids.
Sure. Go ahead.
If, if you drove down Pelican Rapids when those cones were up for the, the drive lanes, it was a flipping gone show. I mean, there were doors flying open, there were, I mean. I mean, there were doors flying open, there were, I mean, people were trying to, to work, to do things, unload trucks, and it requires a police presence to unload a truck now. So now we're expecting our businesses to change the way they do business, because we're putting in roundabouts, we're narrowing our lanes, and that's the way it's gonna be, change the way you do work.
Well, that's why I asked the question, Kevin, because.
I can go around roundabouts all day.
Well, the change in the, to the businesses, in my mind, the roundabouts have nothing to do with that, it's the lane width that has to do with that.
And that bump-out choke point is a terrible thing down there.
The bump-out that's in the middle of the intersection downtown was bigger than I think it's, I think it was especially bad, and one of the comments was about that, obviously as big as it was, and I think Tom, Tom kind of said, well, that can be looked at and kind of pulled back a little bit, so it's not as aggressive, and that would also maybe open up a couple more, sort of parking issues. But to me, again, it's the width of the drivelanes, and I know it was kind of a fiasco in some cases, because people were parking further away than they really would, because of those cones that were set in there. That's what kept people from opening their door further, until they parked further away. When, when, when the curb line's there, people will be able to open their door, and it would extend over the curb line, just like it does now. But I think that's what's kind of changing how some of the businesses have to do business, with the business stuff, is the lane width, the lane width, it's not the, the roundabout. Because if we could have roundabouts and keep the fifteen, fourteen-foot driveline, or eighteen-foot driveline, the roundabout probably won't even be a discussion.
I want to make, I want to get the terms right. What is, so you have the roundabout, what is that other part of the median kind of thing that, that was up at the, up at the Turkey Plant, you had the roundabout, and then going to the east, there was, you had that coned?
Yeah, we have a taper, a mountable taper in there.
What's that called?
Mountable taper.
Mountable taper, so that's a drive over?
Everything is, everything inside, the outside curb, curb is made to be driven over, everything. And the, and the height is two inches, that's not very high.
So how, what's the dimension of that?
The one we're proposing is fifty-foot inside circle, which is that the center.
I mean, the, the median part outside of it.
You mean the length, or the, I mean, it's.
I don't know what the.
Yeah, it's variable.
You had the roundabout.
Yep.
And then you had the driveline for the go-around the roundabout, but then you had a, another thing.
An island, it's, it's called.
Island?
Yeah, low island, it's, it's a raised center island.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Those are on all four?
They are, they are.
Drives of the roundabout.
Yep.
So how, how long are those?
I don't know what type they have with the length of them are, because they variable depending on the truck turning movements and how well they tie in. I could get that for you fairly easily, but.
So my, my question is, if heading, heading south, you have the roundabout, you have that driveline for, for the roundabout, then you have the.
Yep.
Mountable surface.
Thing.
Yep.
That tapers.
The island.
Tapered island.
Yep.
And then you have the bump-out for the crosswalk, what's, I mean, that, and then you have it from the other direction coming the same, the same thing.
Yep.
You're curious the distance between.
There's a lot of road that's being taken up there, isn't there?
It's not as much as you think it is, because right now, there's already no parking at the quadrants anyways. You know, for rounding east for, there's already yellow for all four quadrants, so there's no parking there. We're not extending a lot. I can visualize the, the, the south one, and then to go, to go north, to east, to westbound to go north, down there, you're gonna lose about, about three more parking stalls on that one. On the south one, to go right west, I think it's only one or two.
I, I guess my question is, how much, what, what's that gonna look like with the bump-out for the crosswalk, and then that island before you get to the roundabout?
Maybe I can figure out where you're at. No, because if you think about Yamaato, the way that roundabout comes around the corner at one of the intersections, it's where the parallel parking would be lost, let's say in front of, I'm gonna use the rehab plus as an example. The way that I saw that, the way the drawing kind of shows it, that roundabout, as it comes around there, the park is lost, and the parallel parking is not in front of the rehab plus, which is only right kind of where that corner, the cannon, the memorial is, that's all the further it extends. That median thing that you're talking about, that drive over, I don't think it extends much beyond that, if you're in that park. You have the crosswalk is in that thing, but I don't think it goes very far. I don't think it goes much beyond where the first parallel parking would be, in front of rehab plus.
So why is that a concern, a link?
I'm just, I'm just trying, it's not, I don't think it's a concern, I'm just trying to.
Yeah. Well, come down here Thursday, I know you're busy, we'll have, we'll have drawings up here, we'll have the final layouts. Pardon?
I won't be able to be here Thursday.
I'll be here from ten till two Thursday, so if you want, anytime stop in here, then we can, we'll show it to you.
Which brings up another topic.
Yeah.
Related, but not related. If we're gonna have meetings for this, I mean, there are three types of people in the world. Those that can work, those that can't, and those that won't, and the only people that can make those meetings are those that can't and those that won't.
Yeah, that, that's been kind of the question, that's, the meeting Thursday morning is not for the public, they're not public meetings. They turn into those eventually, accidentally, but it's supposed to be for our design team to work on functional design stuff. We've only, we've, we've had a few open houses, you know, with, before with the cities, planning studies, there's three there, we had one, one was earlier to process. We're gonna plan another one here, I think in August, we're hopefully, we have a layout done. That's gonna be in-person, in the evenings, for people can come to them. You're right, the, the Thursday morning ones, it was kind of a misconception, it's a open house, people come and, which is fine, they do. I don't know, we, they'd be about sixty people starting in every Thursday, every month, which is huge, you know, which is fine, you know, so, yeah, it's not intended for it to be a public conference. I understand your comment, that, you know, it's frustrating, although that work, all day, they can't come to it. I understand, too, you know, Thursday was the demo, people couldn't come to it, you know, it's sad to do it, but, you know, that's what we can make fit into the schedule for Turkey Plant, and our schedules as well. And the demo, it went pretty good, like I mentioned, and we had a lot, it was a good turnout, we had fired trucks, and there was buses, and semis, and other vehicles been through it, and, you know, it, it worked, it, it fit, and I think we were all pleasantly surprised how well it did work. I was surprised how well it worked, you know, so, you know, down-down peace, I mean, it's, it's there. And it's frustrating for the city, I know, going from wide everything to narrow, but that's, it's just what you have to accept, that twelve is gonna be driving, and ten's gonna be parking, and that's the most that we can do. You know, and, and we're still gonna have to fight for that, once it goes to central office, because you'll sign, we'll sign, and they'll sign off on it. And there'll be a battle later, where we have to fight for a twelve-foot driving and ten-foot parking. We have the justification for it, I can do that. I've done quite a few of these now, where I can justify them, and, and there's enough stuff in town here to help me do it, but I can't go over twelve or ten, it's just not gonna happen. So you just have to accept that as a city council and business people, that is, it's just not gonna happen.
So what have we had decided for us on the north, nine fifty-nine?
We're looking at a radial T, which is basically right angle on County Road nine to fifty-nine, it's not gonna be a roundabout, it doesn't justify the expense, or the cost, or the, no real need for it. That intersection is, is deemed number two in our district first, for, it's rated number two worst in our district, which is pretty bad rating. There's a lot of near misses, lots of happening at those skew angles, the high speeds, the interaction speeds, people are avoiding that intersection, a lot of them, they're taking that credit cross in front of the historical marker, so it's not functioning properly. So our goal is to make it more of a right angle, take County Nine, slap it in there, so it's more a right angle T to, to fifty-nine. So it's a nice, simple design that's gonna work really well. And the goal is to carry our sidewalk all the way up to it, to the, you know, the historical marker, our shared use path or sidewalk, all the way up to it, is when the city has that desire, so we're gonna work.
Will that intersection be on the north side of that, or?
It's gonna be in between the building that, and the.
And the monument?
And the monument there, yeah. We're working with the Historical Society, they're tough, too, they have pretty good guidelines, but they say, don't touch our property, don't touch our trees, but we're working with them to have a compromise, and maybe, maybe replace some of the trees we take down.
Is that shit?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's tough.
I took down one of their trees the other day.
I saw one's already gone, so thank you for whoever did that, that's, that's helpful, but, yeah, no, it's, it's tough, we have a lot of rules to follow, too, environmental impacts, which we're trying to minimize, the right-of-way impact we're trying to minimize. Now, we met a couple weeks ago, I talked about fifty-nine, and we're, we're doing it again this Thursday, and our goal is to still have twelve-foot driving lanes, we might not have full, to have a parking on east and west, but we'll do our best, but to minimize, retain all impact, tree impacts, right-of-way impacts, reduce all that. Steve?
One thing I've noticed since you put the cones up on Main Street, is traffic has slowed down.
Yes.
I mean, it has, it's slowed down a lot since.
Yes.
That's up there, so I look at that as kind of a benefit. To get, those guys are gonna have to slow down to go through there, and.
Nobody's passing you on your right. I agree, that's.
That's illegal.
Having that, having that line there, I mean, shows the people with plates from other states, that that's not a two-way highway.
Right. Yeah, I know, the comment, too, we've heard, not just here, not every city is, we do this here, is now we can't park a semi as on a road to unload. That's not legal anyways, just to park on a state highway to unload things, you know, so. Most businesses along fifty-nine, they have a backdoor access along this corridor. I believe there's one I know that does not have a backdoor access, so they can get their deliveries on the back, like they're supposed to in the first place. You know, it's a safety issue, stopping trucks, or whatever, out in the middle of the road, people still do it, they still will, but it's not a safe thing to do, so.
Don, did you have any other questions? Well, I was just gonna comment on Kevin on the north side, too. Dan and Steve, I think it's been a large part of the discussion we've had, or what they'd like to see up there, too, so I think Mind dot's gonna do a good job. Up to this point, listening to what Dan and Steve have said about getting your stuff in on your property, on value, fifty-nine.
So then what would be the process to put a forty-five mile an hour speed limit sign between Gulf Course Road and the motel, rather than having sixty miles an hour up to city?
It's actually, it's very tough, it's tough to do, it's, like you said, the speed study. Mind dot will, will study speeds, and we usually post things of what people are driving. So if people don't slow down, it might even go up. We've seen that happen numerous times, we do speed studies, it goes up, because people are driving too fast. You know, so it's, it's not always to the benefit to do a speed study, their people are going really fast, they do.
One of the things we talked about at the last meeting at mine, because they weren't gonna have a round, the roundabout up there anymore, is some type of a median-type structure, because if there's gonna be.
Put our stoplights up there.
If there're gonna be pedestrians, that infrastructure going up to the monument, and having a way for people to get across the street at the monument area, that opens the door potentially, having some type of a median structure, a traffic separator as you're coming in, and maybe, and nail comes up there, up there a little bit, which would slow people down as they're approaching that curb, that now they see it's not as wide and open as it is right now.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just.
Do you want to address the microphones?
Sure. And I appreciate the opportunity, because I know it's not a public hearing, but if you want to think about what Don just said, we did it on County Road Nine up by Pelican Lake. Okay, there's a, there's a concrete median there, and there's driver feedback signs that say forty mile an hour speed limit. It's not the driver, well, the driver feedback sign helps, but what we've, what we, what the engineer said, and we listened to, and things like that, was, if you make that appear more urban, so in other words, there's curb and gutter and sidewalk on one side, there's a median in the middle, people naturally slow down for it. And it, it shows, because you come around that, you know, going on the route, you come around Highway Nine, and you start screaming towards Pelican Lake and the access and everything like that, you're doing fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, and all of a sudden, here's that median, here's that curb and gutter, here's all of that, and you go, ooh, there's something going on here, and your brain slows you down. Tell me if I'm.
Hundredths.
Yeah, so the county, the counties experienced this, I think that's what Don is talking about on that fifty-nine coming in, because I will tell you that we've done study after study, too. You can put, you can post things to zero, and unless their brain tells them they're going too fast, they're gonna be doing sixty miles an hour, and that's, and we've found that doing some of those visual things, and kind of making people feel like, kind of like downtown here, where Steve said, everybody slowed down, because that name, you know, that lane narrowed up and things like that, it's the same thing with fifty-nine coming in. I think if they do a median there, and kind of give them the idea that, hey, this, there's something changing here, and we need to slow down, is probably the best way to do it, that's what we found up on County Road Nine. Zorba's intersection, same thing, people used to go through there at sixty miles an hour, and they, we've really slowed down the traffic. So just, thank you for letting me comment, but if you're thinking about that, that's a good example in the area of, of what those little medians will do for you.
Appreciate it. Any more questions for Tom?
I don't have a question, but I do, I wanna thank you for setting that up at West Central Turkey, because I was very skeptical of this, and going through that, and watching the trucks go through that, I'm fine with it. That was really, I mean, some of the truckers that I've talked to, they're okay with it, too, they don't, not like it, but they're okay with it. So I think that was really time and effort well spent to set that up up there.
Thank you for the comment, I appreciate that. At first, I wasn't really in favor of doing it either, because it's a lot of work, the second thing happened, and there's a lot of expense that we incurred, but in the end, I think it's gonna be beneficial. I know I'm probably talking too long, and you guys got some more stuff to do.
Any more questions for Tom?
One more thing to comment, sorry. As far as your comment about city having input, you do have a lot of input above the curb. Everything above the curb is basically the city direction. You know, if the curb to curb is gonna be pretty much Mind dot deciding all that, but above the curb, you know, the shared use path, which the city wants to do, but everything at the mannequin zone, everything up there, the city's got a lot to say what goes up in there. So it's, you do got more stuff than you realize to decide to vote on. And that's a big deal up there, that's where people walk and bike, and they sit, and all sort of stuff. So there's a lot, of course, it's all Mind dot approved everything, but the city's got a lot of options, because it is, it is Mind dot right-of-way, and we got a lot of strict rules up there, and more's still coming. You know, one big change in all stop talking is that, once this job is done, we're gonna sign a, it's called a limited use permit with the city, and we're not gonna allow any more sandwich boards advertising on Mind dot right-of-way. People do it nowadays, we have sandwich boards, we have street sales, that's not allowed, that's, that's illegal anyways, people aren't enforcing it. But now it's gonna be in writing in our municipal consent, or is our corporate agreement, that we're gonna enforce it. So there's no more lawnmowers out there, and shoe racks on Mind dot right-of-way. That's, that's, that's illegal, and we're gonna enforce it moving forward. So it's a big change for the city, it's not popular, especially, and I give you the lob for saying that, but it's something, it's not safe to have stuff on our, out there, people are walking and biking, and lawnmower sitting there, it's not safe. And people are gonna, people do get hurt doing that, they trip, and they sue Mind dot, they sue the city, we don't want that. So moving forward, we're gonna work together, and make sure our right-of-way is clean of obstacles, obstructions, and this is a way of doing that, so. of obstacles, obstructions, and this is a way of doing that, so. Sorry to end on such a sour note, but...
Back on the north side, the speed limit, are you saying that it takes, takes studies and to reduce that speed limit?
Yep.
You know, at the last meeting, I said, you've got 60 going all the way up.
Yep. It starts right there just south of County Nine, it goes from 30 to 60. That's where it switches, you know, from our... It does. Yeah. It's very tough. It's actually has to be approved by Congress. Absolutely. Yep, it has to be approved by Congress. Yeah, it's, it's not MINDOT, it's not MINDOT, it's not, it's legislatively approved speed, speed changes, because it's a legal statute.
On Nine, what's it?
Go ahead.
On Nine, that's 35. Is that not your highway?
That's County Highway. Probably the same thing. I'm not sure all that works.
And a speed study was done there too.
And I believe for...
We cannot change a speed limit without a speed study, and MINDOT doesn't force.
And I don't think you can, well, you, the county can change it, but it takes a lot to get it done.
We cannot change a, so, sorry, Mr. Chair, but the county cannot change a speed limit on a CASA road, so state aid-funded road unless we have MINDOT do a speed study. It is against the law for us to change any, any speed limit. We tried, we just tried to do it, if you go a whole 59 in to Fergus Falls, where you go past Paydak and all of that, and you're going to the, and then you take the curb and start climbing the hill to Government Service Center, we just did a speed study there trying to get that so it was uniform, because it kind of does a 45 to 35 to 30 thing. And we said, can we just do one thing there? And the speed study came back and said people are actually traveling 40, 85, or 90% of the people are actually traveling at 45 miles an hour. So guess what? That's the speed.
Exactly right.
So it is not up to local government when it is a federally or state-funded road.
This is follow-up on that. It's actually a safety feature. People, we all drive the same speeds, it's consistent. If people are driving 40, and some doing 60, you have accidents. If we're all going a certain speed, whether it be 60 or 100, it's safer. People are all consistently driving the same speeds. That's why we use 80% of what people are driving as our posted speed limit, to a certain point, you know, but the faster you go, if we're all going the same speed, it's a safer road than people doing 30, 20, 50, and they all smash together in the big ball of fire. We don't like that.
So my understanding, you change the speeds up there from Gulf Course Road coming through the curb, you would have MINDOT to put a speed study up there, and then we would have to somehow have 85% of the traffic going through there, going through that 45.
Never happen.
It wouldn't happen unless everybody in the community just kept driving over there at 45, so they would get to where you...
It wouldn't happen after the job is complete nowadays. We're not gonna do it now. We do it after the job is complete in 2024. And if you want to do a speed study then, after it's built, then we would...
I think it would be effective to build some type of a median, like Wayne said.
And what you said, it will work. It will slow people down. It's, that's almost a guarantee.
We might end up with a...
Slow down.
70.
70.
What, 85, 85 mile an hour?
Any more questions before I let Tom go?
Yeah.
I watched down there, when a combine of dual came through.
Yep.
Your guys were still there, whoever you hired. And they had to go out, they took the marker out of the middle.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, that was that, that temporary pedestrian crossing sign. That crosswalk sign, which is not their year realm, but yeah, you're right.
Well, it's a good idea, though. That's a good idea. But what was the width there?
That was narrower than it will be. I believe that was just a couple feet. That was probably 28 feet, the bump out, bump with the bump out. The edge of our bump out was there, was pretty, was, is narrow. It's probably 14 feet on each side of center line.
The thing, a few minutes later, West Central, Lottertail, he was pulling a, I don't know if it was a foil or something, he couldn't get through. He kind of knocked the marker over.
Sure.
He went a little bit further, and then he just stopped and waited for the traffic to come in. So I don't know what the width of that was.
Yeah, but it's not possible design for everything. We can't design our roads 100 feet wide, because, you know, we designed for, we designed for the majority of vehicles. That's what we designed for. Most vehicles, you know, that have legal width on MINDOT is 8.5 feet. That's our, that's our legal width. You know, that's what a trailer width and everything else, so our, our 12 feet gives you, you know, a foot and a half on each side or so, a wiggle room, and a parking lane is 10 feet wide, you should have room there to park. You know, the average width of a car is six and a half feet. That's it. You know, so 10-foot parking lane, open your door, you should be fine if you get over far enough. If you have to park over far enough. And I agree with whoever said that with the cones there, tubes there, people were shying over, and it's different. You know, I saw people park there, open the door, and they still had room to get out with a smaller car, with no problem. If you have a larger vehicle, you gotta pull over and wait for cars to go by, just, it is what it is. You don't have to do that, so. So it's just a change. It's a different change, so.
I would never pick up on that, but what's that intersection called over 94? It'd be Fuel 75 or more?
It's called the diversion double diamond, a DDI. Super cool. Oh, yeah.
Really, that's MINDOT thing?
What that did was it eliminated all left-turn crashes. There was a huge left-turn crash problem there. That's why we all left turn crashes. I mean, it's...
Well, that's the goal, but they have a...
Safety.
Now they're focusing on right turn crashes.
Yeah, we actually have things called R-cuts, talking about started, a lot of stuff out there that we could introduce for safety. Everything that MINDOT does, everything is based on safety. The safety of traveling public, whether it's going roundabouts, or R-cuts, or DDI's, or just lots of different things out there that we do for safety. And that's, that's what we try, we have to, because people die if we don't. Diversion double diamond intersection. It's called DDI.
Sounds like a wrestling move.
That had to scare the Jesus out of people when it first got in there.
Yeah, that's...
It's a crazy intersection.
Yeah, I think it's got seven, seven, seven single-lized intersections on it, which is a big change, but it's a safety-driven thing, and so there's only a three in the state, so there's not very many, because they're expensive, I mean, they're hard to do. There's one in St. Cloud, there's one south of City, there's one in Moorhead now, so not many of them. However, there's over 400 roundabouts in Minnesota. 400.
402.
And soon to be, soon to be 4,000.
Keep growing, so. I can talk all day, I'm sorry. I'll shut up now. I'll come back anytime. I'll be here Thursday.
See you Thursday.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, see you later.
Item number 13 is West Central Initiative proposal. I was planning commission, and Tom is gonna address that?
Yeah, I'll start, and then Kevin's continuing too. The planning commission had asked West Central Initiative, Al's, you know, we've talked, yeah, I've mentioned other proposals too, but the planning commission reached out to West Central Initiative and asked for them to come up and address the planning commission as far as what West Central Initiative has that would help them basically figure out what to do on that northwest 48, it was a 58 of the city line. And so based on the planning commission request of West Central Initiative, Jill Onson came up and she shared with them what West Central Initiative had for resources, and ultimately, they asked her to present to them a proposal to give them the technical assistance to try and develop a plat for that northwest property. And so in your packets is a copy of the proposal, scope of work that West Central Initiative put together for them. The planning commission looked at it last night and went through it last night again. It was in the packets, so you guys had a copy of it also. And then Jill came tonight just in case the council had any questions about the proposal. I think it's kind of pretty self-serving for you, but I think I was just a great known opportunity to speak about it with Jill, you know.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for the invitation from the planning commission. West Central Initiative is always excited when you ask us to see what we can do to help. You've got a lot going on in your community as I've sat and listened to it. So I'm going to keep it brief. If you have questions, please help, let me answer them for you.
So basically, the proposal is to have West Central Initiative meet with the planning commission, it says in here about three to four meetings. And I, and I don't know, you know, basically, I think how long the meetings have to be each time is something that the urban designer, planner, Alexander Johnson, you know, was kind of determining that with the planning commission, that I think it probably would have to be three to four meetings. They're gonna try and establish a plat, there are probably gonna be two, three all meetings. I don't know.
And just to provide some clarity, to your point about the USDA, this would not be something that could go out for RFP. It's kind of an initial facilitation planning, so almost like a pre-planning, just to make sure that the planning commission understands what they want to see in their development, so that when those RFPs are created, that all of those pieces can be incorporated and are part of that.
So it's just helping them, just like the council instructed the planning commission a while back, to figure out, you know, working with the community, what that plat there would look like, how it's gonna be zoned, that type of thing. And this is, this proposal is sort of going to give them a facilitator to try and accomplish that preliminary plat on what that northwest property would look like. And Kevin, you want to speak on that?
No. And the only thing I would add is that, I mean, this is something that we, we, on the planning commission side, have just beat our heads into the wall with. And we've wanted to go forward, and there's hesitation, so we get pulled back, and then we want to go forward, and then we get pulled back. So in my mind, I kind of see it as, you know, this is, we tackle this the same way you'd eat an elephant, one bite at a time. I mean, we don't necessarily have to plat all 40 acres. Maybe we plat 20 acres. Maybe we plat 10. Maybe we, you know, if, the, the numbers that we were given five years ago was approximately $1,000 a foot for infrastructure. Well, we have two, currently, we have two places where we could jump off of for that. So maybe we work, maybe we develop five, five lots or 10 lots, and I, I just, but I think where we get hung up on the planning commission side is that we see this 40 acres or 60 acres or whatever it is, and, and there are elements on the commission that feel that by the time we get this done, we're gonna have curb and gutter and street signs and, and a roundabout up on the other end, and I mean, that it's gonna be a finished, you know, it's, I think we're making it more of a project than it needs to be.
I agree. I think at the end of the day, with their help, we would have what that 40 acres would look like on plat. That's it. How much the city develops, whether it's one block, two blocks, whatever, that's all based on where we want to start. But to have that 40 acres all platted out, and how it's gonna be zoned, if it's, if it's commercial along the highway and a residential, you know, whatever it is, to have that 40 acres mapped out goes a long way towards helping us potentially reach out to USDA with a completed plat, and how much we want to develop as we inch our way through that plat and put housing there up. So I think this is a good thing, to get somebody in there that can help the planning commission start taking this step, because they have been struggling that quality.
Hearing all that, is there a motion to approve West Central Initiative's scope of service?
No motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same. Motion carried. Item number 14, legal services approval, and there was, that was included in our packet also, and Councilman Strand and Administrator Solga were on that committee. We want to thank them for the work they've done on this. Don, do you want to speak to that? And then Councilman Strand, please enter in.
Sure. Yeah, so, so Councilman Strand and I met after we sent out the proposals and got them back again. And, you know, looking at the proposal, now that you can see what was submitted, when you look at the two of them, we didn't interview either one of them as far as calling them up, or putting about them, talking them of all that they submitted and the services they provided, we just based it off the paperwork that was provided. And you can see by looking at that paperwork, I think, because I know both firms and how both firms, especially Peckelberg's office, from what they've told us, I'm working with Jeff Scott, and he does all of our criminal stuff, I think either one of them would look to the city. From looking at the proposals, you can see that it's seeming to, Peckelberg is up less cost because their hourly rate is less. They're also local. But my concern with, I have to say about both of them, but my concern with Peckelberg's office is, based on what they presented to us, we don't know the extent that they can do a lot of the stuff that was spelled out in client law offices. I mean, they, they talked about, you know, being able to do developer agreements. And I remember when we did the developer agreement for the new apartments out there, we had our city attorney attempt to put together development agreements, and he was paid to do that, but he also had to call on our financial consultant, Candy Omdal, to help him do that, and so we also paid her for that. So I don't know how much experience Peckelberg's office had that type of thing. We know that Scott and, out of their office, is experienced in working with, with, I think he named Elizabeth and Roxy and Dalton and somebody else, and he does their civil work for them. So even though we'd be our local attorney, that would be working here, this office on behalf of the city, we know that, that other attorneys that work for Peckelberg have some civil experiences. I just don't know how to do that based on what they told us. When you look at a client law office, their rate is higher, they aren't in, so, you know, I know we can do a lot of things via Zoom now. They are set up to do that. I'm sure Peckelberg is, you know, able to, to meet with us via Zoom, however, they're local, it's probably not, something is probably used with them really much, but there is that Zoom capability now, because there still is something about, you gotta run shuffle paperwork back and forth, having that local perspective. So, you know, I don't want to, you know, feel as a death or anything, but in, in fact, it's definitely wrong, but I think they're working through it. I think Peckelberg's office could probably be a little less cost, but also the learning curve. However, even with the proposal, she also did talk about that aspect of the two little chin stands that they're considering they have to learn, and they wouldn't be charging the city for things that they have to learn to provide that stuff, that's true. Do you want to, anything to...
Well, Don's our expert at this, of course. Lindsay's a super lady. She's really becoming involved, and I think she'll sort of, well, it's really nice to call local if possible. The client is definitely more capable, a little more expensive, but really amongst it, what you get done, you know, how much of each project. So I support, I mean, I want to go with Peckelberg.
And I think that kind of thing I was talking about was, to give our local attorney an opportunity, we could make them the city attorney, appoint them as city attorney, and start working with them and see how it goes for you. If, if we call on them and they just think that they're not able to provide the way that we need it done, we can always look again.
Is there a contract we enter into? Would we choose?
You know, I don't think we did with Greg Larson, and I think it's pretty clear in that proposal that was given by both of these, that, you know, they could work on a common material basis, and as we need them, and, you know, just upon the essential basis, we need to make sure that we do from the city perspective, is when we have issues with the client commission and the city council, and we let that legal representation here at those meetings, that we need to help them and let them know ahead of time if they can find the duty of this, you know, their meeting. And that's, that's another nice aspect of the local from Peckelberg's office. They just brought it to me. They're, and now it is good for our attorney to set it up on Zoom all the time, which is a little more worth for staff. But I guess our recommendation is to, to fund it, to do Peckelberg and give it to us.
Any more? No motion?
Second. Motion second. Discussion.
So there isn't a problem having both civil and legal in the same...
It's not the same attorneys, number one, but the country board, both the same firm, and a lot of them don't. But if that becomes a sticking point for it for whatever reason, I think that'll present itself and, you know, we'll, and we'll see what we have to do with that.
Any more discussion? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried. Item number 15 is FYI topic, economic development director position discussion. Don?
Yeah, and don't forget we all should have...
What?
Number 10.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But anyway, you recall that the planning commission has come to the city council with a recommendation to separate the city council from the EDA by funding a separate economic development authority made up of, I guess, volunteers, business owners, other representatives from the community, and I don't know if they're thinking that this is some councilman, on that board of council representation. And so it was something that they wanted the city council to consider. And I just wanted to have the council, you know, maybe discuss a little bit, give me some direction as, as I'm starting to think about the 2022 budget. But I want to give you another thought. Instead of separating the city council from the EDA, which personally, I don't think is a good, a good move... is a good, a good move, um, but another, another way to do this is to consider creating and hiring a full-time economic development director, somewhere it's written in, and I know you've had this discussion, I think in the past, the city's considered this before, I know, I know a lot of times when we do the, the comp plan updates or some community surveys, this is something that always comes up. And, you know, right now, the way that economic development is happening in Pelican Rapids is just one of the hats that I put on. When, so your table, we talked about the HRA coming in, giving that resolution to buy that house and tear it down, that's economic development, that was something that, that I, that I worked on, and I got a hold of the HRA about. Also, you heard them, HRA, talk about the small city development program grant that they're starting to work on and, and they're serving. Again, that's economic development, and that's something that I worked on with, you know, reaching out to HRA about this again. So there are things that are getting done, but they don't get done as often and as efficiently I think as they, they need to, and move houses and that ahead. So when you think about, um, having somebody that their job, you know, for forty hours a week, is to work on economic development, if they're effective, in my opinion, you would see, you would see positive growth happening, an increase in tax base happening, which in effect would potentially pay for that position. How much that position would cost the city, I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of thinking, and I could be way off base here, but I'm thinking probably sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year plus that. But if we can expand Pelican Rapids because of that, or expand the tax base because of that, that position potentially could pay for something, it's a bigger factor. Um, and, you know, I had gotten a copy of a job description of individual over in the firm, just to start to see how that would kind of have to be provided, you know, as a template. When you think about the, the network that these economic development directors in each community have, that they kind of, they, they build their own network of contacts, whether it's the USDA, whether it's the D, one of the things with Otter Tail County now, that's, that's kind of their, for somebody to work with, with Otter Tail County putting together the, uh, uh, community development authority, and as many times as Amy Baldwin and the director have been to the city and kind of shared stuff with the city, to build, you know, to, to build twenty twenty-four, or whatever it's called, the big build, the housing project, and as much as we've had conversations with her, and I meet, I meet with her and, uh, around economic development topics, uh, via Zoom, monthly, cities who are her, so there's that, 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 um, agency that's put together for economic development purposes. So to have somebody working forty hours a week, reaching out to Greater Fergus Falls, C, the CDA, uh, these other agencies, I think, if they're doing their job, they could be effective, building that network and, like, grant writing, there's a whole, whole list of things in my mind that could be put down on paper as a job description, and then just it's a matter of then just posting that and hiring the right person, and if we hire the right person, I think it could have a positive impact. If we don't hire the right person, obviously then we look at them for the right person. But it's something that I wanted to throw, instead of moving the council, so that EDA away from the council, I think it might be more effective, consider hiring an economic development director, director, to work all these economic things out there, they'd be the liaison to the downtown businesses and to actually have time, because that's their job, to meet and talk to the business owners to see, how can the city help you, you know, and, and make sure that if there's, if there's ordinance change, all that type of thing could be more proactive with the city businesses. Um, so it's just a, a broad range of things, um, that I, I think it could be a big, a positive thing to tell them. So think about possibly adding a position instead of moving the EDA away from council. And I, I'd like to have maybe, maybe a couple more, unless you guys already know what you want to do, but, um, maybe some more discussion, have you think about that, that way of doing it, uh, in time for me to think about if it's something we want to move forward to in the 2022 budget.
Is it, is it the kind of position that could be a shared position between, say, Rotsie and Pelican? I mean, is that a?
I, yeah, I don't know, I, I think it would be kind of tough because who do we really?
I hear somebody from Fergus.
You got two cities competing, you know, this that person trying to do something, housing, for instance, housing in Rossay and housing in Pelican, where do they, you know?
They'd have the rewriting grants, the same grant for each city, it wouldn't really, yeah, competing, it would.
Yeah, so, you know, I think to be effective, it would be better if, you know, whoever, that has a good position, but.
I like his idea, I, I really.
I do too.
I would move forward, whatever the budget, whatever, I can't do a billion things every day, I mean, I just, and that's a balance.
Well, it's not efficient, you know, we've, we've gotten a lot of things done, you know, in 2005, but it's, how much more could we have done at that point?
I'd say right about, yeah, planet, I'd say.
So, so as I work with the, the budget committee?
Since Councilman Commissioner Johnson is here, what's the county doing?
Since you asked. Thanks again. I got a quick coming to these, I end up at the podium all the time. Um, actually, I appreciate being here and seeing what all, all of the good work you people are doing, and, um, so it, it's funny, I don't know, we started with an economic developer in 2012, um, his name was Nick Leonard, he is now the deputy county administrator, who's also in charge of economic development, he now has a team of three, uh, the CDA director, the HRA director that Otter Tail County has now taken out, uh, taken on, um, and two other contract employees that, that we're working with right now. I think it'd be a marvelous opportunity because we have Amy Baldwin, who used to be with the city of Fergus Falls, she's now Otter Tail County wide, can we network with someone who isn't economic, Don's hats, my friend Rick West once said it best, there's so much crap being put in the middle of my plate, there's stuff falling off the sides. I think Mr. Solga has the same phenomenon going on, that things just fall off the side of the plate because stuff keeps getting put. We in Otter Tail County are trying to grow our tax base, that's our goal, right? We, we, we understand that we need to invest and, and do that. We've, we've put substantial investment in growing our tax base, because we can't just stand still, because our taxes are never going to go down. Our cost of, our, our cost of doing business isn't going down, what the state and the feds are requiring us to do, isn't going down. So now we need to grow our tax base so that we don't tax our people completely out of their homes. Um, so our theory is, a rising tide raises all boats, we're going to bring economic development to the entire county, we want to partner with our local communities to do that, because what's good for Pelican Rapids is good for Otter Tail County, what's good for Dalton, Minnesota, is good for Otter Tail County. Dalton, for example, just had a mobile home park that they just didn't know what to do with, it was dilapidated, it was falling down, it was doing whatever, they came to Otter Tail County and the HRA, we helped them get rid of the last two mobile homes that were dilapidated, we helped them develop a plan on what to do with it, and then we also gave them some incentive money in order to get that plan rolling. So I think the economic development people, what they do is, is they know where all these pots of money are, they know where the USDA money is, they know where the Minnesota ag money is, they know where the CDA money is, they know where all of those kinds of things are, that frankly, unless you're doing that full-time, you don't know what's there. Um, I, I think it would pay great dividends, we're hoping it does at the county, it's actually started to show that it has at the county, um, you know, three years ago, we started the big build, um, fifty-two, five thousand homes in five years, are we going to get there? Eh, maybe. Um, are we going to get halfway there? Probably. You know, well, twenty-five hundred homes in Otter Tail County, that's a big number, you know, and so I think Pelican Rapids, if you can do ten new homes in the city of Pelican Rapids in the next five years, that would be a substantial increase in your tax base, without it having to increase your services, right? It doesn't take any more plow trucks, it doesn't take any more of that stuff, you've just broadened out your tax base. So that's what Otter Tail County's doing, that's the theory that, that our county board lives by, is, is, you know, we need to, we need to do that, we need to assist communities, we need to, we're not, we're not pitting our, to Kevin's or Steve's point, we don't want somebody to pit ourselves against Rotsie, or have to worry about that, we're trying to just do, try and help wherever we can to help every community, but without a director helping you, I didn't even know this was on the agenda, but, but without someone doing this as a full-time job, I think you're just missing a whole lot of opportunity. And, and so, we're, and we would be glad to partner with a person from the city of Pelican Rapids, Amy will be here, um, some of her staff will be there, Barbara Dacey has shown a tremendous capacity to understand what housing needs are, we're doing a housing study right now, all of that plays together, I think if we all partner together, we just become stronger. So that's Wayne Johnson's take on the question that I think you asked.
Okay. Thank you. One last comment, I see, you know, how this person could get the EDA council a lot more active because part of their job is to figure out some, you know, and, and develop some projects to bring to the city council, to the EDA, and present them, just to get the EDA more active, and I think that would be good.
Are you looking for a motion to move forward?
Well, I, I, you can do it by motion if you want to, I just want to be able to start building it into the 2022 budget, because I present the budget to you guys, what I'm hoping to do is include what that budget would have, you know, from a cost standpoint potentially, to the best that I can estimate a starting position like that, and, and then we'll know what the number is.
I might suggest you start thinking about job requirements as well.
Well, I've got a, I've got a job description.
Okay.
A template that I'm going to use, you know, we write it based on how I see, and you guys, you guys, you guys will see and approve that job description.
So we're, we're looking at 2022, 23-ish, right, or?
I want to build it into the 2022 budget, and I want to get in this position, possibly we look at somebody next year?
I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
I'm not being jingy, but it'd be hopefully next year.
Yeah, yeah. I know that we urge Don to put in a budget and go forward.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Go ahead, Don, another job for you.
Job to get rid of a job, that's all.
Actually, I think it's a job to get rid of a lot of jobs.
Well, like I said, you know, the county, if you need help with job descriptions, if you need help, Amy Baldwin and the team down there is certainly willing to help kind of guide pitfalls, those kinds of things, we, you know, we've done it in the last five years, so we're, we know some of the holes not to step in and some of the directions to go, so please call on us, because we're, we're here to help.
Actuarial cooperation. Let's move back up to item number ten, is fire department 2022 budget, which is in your packet. Administrator Solga, Councilman Foster and I met, I believe, we had two meetings on this Monday, we're going to bring it for you this evening. Don?
Yeah, and I have it on screen too, but, um, so we met, I, I've had conversations, Trevor looked at all of this, and, um, you know, he's all, he's fine with it too, but just to run down the 2022 versus the 2021, is really all I'm going to do, um, in a nutshell, the line items all pretty much stayed the same, uh, for the expense side of things, except for when you get down to capital outlay, and, um, the capital outlay number, uh, you know, kind of went from eleven thousand, three hundred, down to eighteen hundred dollars. And the reason for that ninety-five hundred dollar drop was really to try and offset the, the increase, the twenty thousand dollar, twenty-one thousand dollar increase, which is the other big thing at the last item on the, on the left column, 2022, that twenty thousand, six sixty-eight add-on, the two that was approved for leasing the next truck and the equipment, the SCBA equipment. So in talking to Trevor, you'll notice the note one down the bottom is fully crossed up, because we had, um, a set aside of, of, uh, forty-five hundred dollars, and then also a capital, uh, capital replacement fund that we were trying to do, or, or that was in the budget for five thousand dollars, and when Trevor would come up with something that wasn't actually approved in the budget based on, you know, the council at the beginning of the year, if he came up with a need, um, he would try and, you know, basically come up with something, and he needed that five thousand, he'd come to the council because it wasn't approved, or he'd say, I got five thousand replacement funds, I need this council approved. Well, my thought, Trevor is, um, with the twenty thousand dollar add, let's try and offset that, so we're going to take out that forty-five hundred dollar set aside, and we're also going to take out that five thousand dollar capital thing that we had, to try and minimize the increase, so really the continent's increase of twenty dollars in the past. And Trevor was, said, yeah, that makes sense, uh, for a while, because we've got right now, if you look at, we've got, towards the bottom, we've got city hall, uh, fire hall lease, a truck, a truck lease, it's SCBA lease, and now another truck, uh, equipment lease. So we've got four leases, um, right now, for equipment or trucks, for building or whatever, so for a few years here, to let some of that stuff clear off, before you start looking at putting a set aside back in there, um, kind of makes sense. So, um, everything else pretty much stayed the same, the one thing I also want to share with you though, is, um, is the capital replacement budget. So what this shows, and this is what Trevor and I kind of go through and put together for the replacement of equipment, is that they can just pick trucks and that's the thing where I do that part of it. So what this shows in 2022, it's just a quick, real graphic way of looking at the leases we have in place right now, and you'll see that we have that nineteen ninety center that we replaced in 2012, first thing was in 2019, and how much longer we have to go. And then, um, we have this truck here, that we just started last year, and, and, our first thing that I was just going to do is go in there after time, that you guys approved for. The SCBA's have a couple more years to go, and this is that equipment, that hydronic electric equipment, that we're going to start paying for in 2022. And then down here is the fire hall, I added this object so it was part of it, if it hasn't been passed, I want to throw it on there so you could quickly see how many years the fire hall, uh, these things have left to go. It also kind of shows you that the next truck that we're looking at, we have 2026 time coming, and the blue in the year, basically, that's the year we've ordered, or we've kind of set it up so that the first payment would be given to, uh, the following year, so we usually call it, call it, it's a, um, in, so we have that, that sort of a recount for stuff being ordered. So it shows, the replacement schedule at this point shows, uh, two trucks, so we have to order them up in 2026, 2027, it's a venture, and now the B, the combined is about, you know, forty-five hundred dollars, well, or forty-five thousand dollars, well, well, at that time you drop off, it's seven, uh, forty-five thousand dollars paid in here, this one's done, so you can kind of see how it all kinds of, all this stuff all kinds of, and then further on is the, uh, first response, the trucking off, so it's, and one of the replacements two thousand and seven. So this kind of gives you an idea of what the replacement schedule looks like, uh, out of the, uh, 2039, a lot of it might not be here yet, but it gives you an idea. A lot of it might not be here yet, but it gives you an idea.
What I think a lot.
So, any questions down here? Give you an idea of what we're, what we're looking at. We're back to the budget. We're back to the budget. Like I said, Trevor and I talked about it, I met with the budget committee, also Foster and Mayor, went through it, and we can add all that information to the council. So we tried to get the fire department budget done first, then our work chat, take this portion of the issue to the general version, and start working on it.
And then note three, it's, is that, it's a 4.1 increase or 4.11?
Uh, 4.11. 4.11, I'd say, is enough to, to, to tell percent increase.
Officer Foster, anything to add?
No, Don covered as thoroughly as he ever does, so.
Will you approve this?
Yes.
Would you approve the fire department budget for 2022?
I'll second, thank you for your work.
We have a motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried.
No, actually I have, I do have a question. With a 4% increase for the fire department, do we expect similar increase for all the departments across the board, or is that just kind of a?
This increase is, no, it really, very.
This is strictly equipment and capital outlays and things like that. It's not.
It's like a copper, you know, it's not like that. You know, each, each, each budget's different because the capital needs are different, you know.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Steve, for working, I appreciate it.
Let's jump down to item number 19, barbed wire.
Okay, well, many years, well, a few years ago, I started bringing my kids to the pool and they didn't allow, you know, some, you know, some of that motion or, you know, but anyway, we had this barbed wire on the outside of the pool, and I just, I couldn't believe that. And I drove by last night to see, and it's still there, and I just, having barbed wire...
This'll make sure when you drop the kids off at the pool, they stay there.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, we have barbed wire over our precious ones and we don't allow barbed wire fence in town. So I moved that, we removed the barbed wire as soon as possible and then not involve barbed wire at the new pool system. Is there?
Well, here, I mean, I'm...
Deterring.
No, but here's my, my, I'm not the defender of barbed wire, but my, my idea, my thought behind it, that the reason it's there, is at 10 o'clock at night, if somebody's staying in the campground and wants to go swimming, and they drown in that pool, whose liability is that?
Yeah, but what if somebody lines up there and gets tamed?
Gets hung up in it? I suppose it's the same liability, but it, I think it always has been a deterrent. I've seen it on a lot of pools.
I studied ordinances last night and some cities don't allow, and you can throw a blanket over, you can climb a tree and rock in.
Would we have to raise the fence?
No, I don't think so.
I just, I don't think there's a... Can anybody second my motion?
Not yet.
I'll second it just so we can have further discussion.
Yeah, I don't think it makes any difference if it's...
Don. My thought is, obviously, when that pool was built back in the seventies, that must have been put on there, and it's never, it's never, to my knowledge, I don't think it's ever been in the industry, but you're right, people can throw whatever they want, over protect themselves and go if they really want to get to swimming. Plus, back, back then, I don't know, you know, ways to, to monitor stuff have changed, technology has changed, that we do this new pool. I don't know if there's a camera system, you know, in the design that like this is in the call, but I think, and that's why I'm pretty sure it's not, although the, the conduit and that stuff, I believe, are in the design. But I think there's something to look at, some type of a system, camera system, security system for that pool, we don't need barbed wire, and some type of a call-out, you know, monitoring, monitoring whatever. So...
What, what do you mean a call-out?
Well, you know, some type of a monitoring system, there must be something out there that if something happens, it calls the police department.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so I think there's not technology, we have, the barbed wire is not needed.
It just doesn't need to be.
But as, as we fast forward to 2012, when we put the addition on the wastewater plant, that has barbed wire fence, I thought.
Also, the water plant, there's kind of a breakdown on, yeah.
Well, I think that's, makes more sense than a, than a swimming pool.
A kiddie pool?
Because of whatever kind of attack on your water system, but I think, you know, I've, speaking for me, myself, when I was a patrolling officer here, I checked that pool five times a night with a spotlight because I remember when I was a kid, what I did in my city pool.
What did you do?
Well, nothing. You were bare roof in it to get everybody out, no. But I've never once, ever once, found anybody in this Pelican pool. We got cut all the time.
You didn't have barbed wire, right?
No. But I don't condone the barbed wire either.
Okay, we have a motion of second on the floor. Any more discussion? Discussion? Discussion?
Are we presented with any liability? I mean, again, if there's barbed wire there and somebody goes in, we can at least say we have some kind of prevent it.
I think you could probably go the other way with that too, where if somebody tried to go in and ends up hanging from it and needs multiple surgeries to repair themselves, we may be liable for that.
Maybe this is the first question before I'm going to see what you're trying to...
Yeah.
She can be, if you advise the council on any better action you take as it relates to the barbed wire.
But I, I do, I think...
We get an attorney involved, yeah, we won't have...
Yeah, we'll never get an answer.
We won't have a...
Yeah.
Just cut it off.
Just cut it off, and, and I think your insurance is the fence. That's, you're making a, a valiant effort to keep people from falling in your pool.
Make some...
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Polls? Motion carried.
We will...
Cutters off. Thank you, thank you.
Or after the council chambers get done.
I have nothing to do with this part, but I'll...
Do you mind if we wait on the school for the season? I'm not waiting on them. We're gonna do this, so...
I gotta work tomorrow, what are you gonna do?
I am cutters. Brian left me, I don't...
Okay. Moving on, item number 16, city administrator report.
Okay. Well, obviously, the same old, same old, I worked with Danielle to put the, the agenda and stuff together. I also met with, the first controller, the risk was, another integrator or program company, just to look and see if we want to have another integrator accessible to us for programming and stuff, all the, all the PLC boards and control panels and control boards down there. I attended a virtual meeting on the state's capital budget request system, the state when you want to have, you know, request money for tools to the bonding of the location and stuff, we're really forced to go on the, the state site and enter your information and submit application, you know, we fill out a bunch of areas and budget information, all that stuff, and then the legislature has all this stuff and they go into the, you know, the bonding cycle, as a legislative session, or if next year's actually bonding going, questions, so they use all that to do that. Now, the wastewater plant, we had a power outage down from the pretreatment building, new building, and so I spent some time working with the guys on that to make sure we got new information, we did it through the city, insurance coming on, so this is gonna be somewhere between undespaced and $70,000 and $100,000 loss, but, you know, we just have a piece of proof, definitely, so I'm still gathering up the information. The systems are all up and running now, we're not sure why. The power outage, but in a nutshell, what happened is we have a, a sensor on the bottom of that pretreatment building, third level down, well, when that sensor gets wet, it's supposed to call the operators and tell the council to draw. Well, this thing filled up with 22 feet of water, the whole border level was flooded, and this thing never called up. We're trying to figure out why, I don't know if we'd be able to determine why, but it's a covered loss, and, so, we're spending time on that. I know the property owner that's requesting to have an alley and, alley vacated, but he's been looking at all of this, and at some point the finding commission will be during this, I mean, for, and with the council. But also in this process, and looking at this alley, it makes sense to be vacated, but also there's a street that they're not looking to bait, because when the city's discussing certain things, that's including that. So I'm trying to reach out to all of your board and property owners just to have that discussion with them, and I do have a petition that two of the four have signed, and I'm just trying to get the other two to meet with me and talk about it, and then once I have that petition through, they can hear, I will be, for the finding commission if they need to, well, for sure to the council, the whole public here and them. I also met with Sartre, Jake from Sartre regarding the council's thing, community reading and, you know, kind of reviewing that and the next steps. They took some vacation for 11 days, so gone, I was in the last conference in August. Again, I mentioned it earlier, but I attended a lucky virtual meeting with our company's community development, so we were just talking about communities and estates and programs and that other thing too, which is another PR for economic development situation. And then with the, after the last council meeting, I did spend some time with the pool committee, kind of talked a little bit about next steps, especially because, you know, they presented that the, the bonding committee of the state level told them that as they were in the council, it's not going to be on the pool. Well, because of some things that have transpired after that council meeting, you know, sat down and, and that was, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, not necessarily one of the reasons, but, something that you're excited for, with the amenities and that other thing, but there are still things happening. I was contacted by one of the legislators, and it goes back to that state bonding application thing, and so based on the conversation I had with, with representatives, I did submit an application on that, on the state bonding project site, capital project site, I submitted one for the pool, asking them again, and this would be the next legislative session, asking them again for a minimum of $1,000, but the reason I don't expect necessarily for them to consider at that time, plus I told, I told the representative that we really can't wait until the legislature goes through another bonding session to see if they want to give more than half a million dollars, because that delays this project, that'll another year. All that's gonna do is increase the cost of this project and make our request to the state even higher, and that's not, it's probably only going to come in at any rate. I told them, we've been, we've testified before, before the capital committee twice now, and we spent hours between Amy King and Kate and the pool committee and myself, spent hours on this stuff, only to be told they're not gonna get money for the pool. Well, they think there's still a possibility with the special session going on, that from what, from what I was told, is our project was put in a bucket, wasn't swept, you know, under the weather, it was put in a bucket, it was other state project, and during the special session, they were looking at this stuff, but they wanted a, we advised them to go ahead and submit one for the next session, and we had a grievance for that. So I did that. The other thing that I'm looking at doing is, I'm reading that resource to potentially apply to state fund, like we looked at the, the test and bridge one, so I'm already working on that part of it. I've gotten the narrative done, I worked with the youth and engineering a little bit to share as much as they've heard with us, actually hiring them to do it. Trying to put together what a project, you know, have a budget, that has to be a project that can be made and all that stuff you have to do, edit out all that, and just like to have that budget information for this system. I also submitted, one of the things for the ARP fund, the new COVID fund, the Biden fund, the anyone calling, the process for the city to get our 290,000 or 260,000, we don't know for sure when and what it's gonna be, or it hasn't, hasn't sent out to that detail level yet, but part of the process to do that is, we have to get on another state system and apply for it, and so I've done that, so that we're in the system, and from what we gathered so far, and I'm listening to the Minnesota city's virtual meetings on this stuff to get this much information, but apparently, we're gonna get one half of the 260, I'll call it, I think I was sharing 290 before, now it might be 260, but we're gonna get one half of it in, I believe, July of 2021, or next month. The other half we won't get until July of 2022, so, but you had to apply for it, so I did that, just so we were in the system. The mayor and I had a meeting with people services and what central authorities regarding the lagoons, they had turned red, and so it just kind of wanted to, people services wanted to just get, and so lagoons are basically the pre-pubes for the great, from the current point, on just moving across and break, and that's something just kind of go with the flip around, so they didn't sort of make a couple of all of them. I met with Mayor Frager and Councilman Mark Craft, just getting ready for the next meeting with, with, I didn't know, I'm not, I'm just, um, also for this, the finishing, I met with the project, the meeting was right inside the project, we viewed the progress and stuff that's coming, and maybe it's, it's new, and, and I reached out to them, and told them some of the things, you know. And then I met with the executive directors and the Pelican Valley, executive director and the facilities guys, as well as Brian Olson and myself, and the architects of the pool project, because one of the things that we're gonna need to do is get a temporary construction placement from Pelican Valley, because when we do that, that work along the west line, we want to be, have that even in place, because we will be deserving property on their side of that line, so we want to kind of just get with them, fill them off with, let them know here what we need to do, they're all fine, if there's stuff that'd be agreed, a thing to do. One of the things with doing the pool and the clinic right now is that, and concrete steps that go down, when this project's done with everything being flipped, we do a concrete step, step going lower. So, you know, we kind of talked to them about moving my stuff and make sure that we're doing, it makes maintenance for them, going grass, and like, like, maybe we use this, so they'll, but we will have to at some point put together a temporary construction placement and we'll present to their board, because when we need, obviously, when we start. Brian and I met with Apex Engineering about the GIS stuff, which I know we brought to the council before, you know, kind of get all of our, our, our infrastructure, where the title, water sewer mains, service lines, all that stuff, current stuff, all in the GIS format, and Apex has been working on that for, for a while now, put a little bit of money in the budget to do that, and it's come a long way, we kind of like finalized where we are with that, and, so we just wanted to give them the finalize, that it does, because this is all, there's no, there's, E, ERSI or ESI standards there, there's, in order to have the ability to pull this stuff up, down on our, on our devices, take licenses, so, you know, and they're not much, but one of the things that we talked about too is, in the past, a few years ago, more years than I can remember now, not that many, but we had, the council had approved us getting one of those criminal GPS devices so we could map our own stuff, well, this, the technology... map our own stuff. Well, this, the technology changed from, it's just been outdated. And so we need to, we talked about, and we'll be talking about the budget, whether we start talking about the budget, you know, about getting another device now, so we can spend our own time doing that, but also, um, at some point, I think, we'll, we'll come to the council and share with you guys the information that we're going to be able to pull off with an iPad, when Brian's out there, it's just unbelievable. But it was, they shared the different attributes of, of, of a curb, of a name or something like that, all the things that Brian could have in there, what it was playing, what it consists of, how big it is, just on and on and on. And so, um, Brian can do a lot of that stuff on his, on his own, um, but just move forward with that GPS stuff, it's a really good move. I also met with, uh, Brian Corf from the school, who had some conversations about the soccer field, and kind of looked back to, you know, some things that council approved with the bridge and that stuff, too, uh, over there, but, you know, kind of going beyond that. He, he also just wanted to talk about soccer field, housing, because the school would be dying to have a place for their, uh, staff, teachers, whatever, that was like, the living colors and that, as they're working through this school system, being home for them, and, so he just wanted to know where the city was at as far as housing and development of housing and that type of thing. So it was just a general reading with the things. We also, I also attended the city's right to know annual meeting stuff there, the higher, like, kind of the co-op to perform, so all the, all the, uh, employees that, uh, held the conference call with the council, you know, regarding the demos and kind of how, how that stuff is going, and just kind of giving them a sense of, you know, inviting them to this meeting after the discussion we had tonight. I attended the June twenty-third school community meeting, I attended the climate commission meeting. Um, and then HRA brought up their small city development on that one slide, and that was kind of an engine, economic development, one of the things I put in place. And where we're all with that is, that full application that she had mentioned, it starts by the city basically surveying, um, business owners, homeowners, or rental property owners. And by the way, when I say surveying, is, is we have them fill out one page of, that basically lets us know they're interested in this program and possibly applying for funding. And so it all is, is their name, their address, you know, the great short things for them to fill out, and then they drop it off at city hall. We collect all these things up, and we're going to be collecting them through August fifteenth. Once we have all these, I'll get them down to HRA, and they'll know by the number, whether, of, of, of what's submitted, whether we have enough for them to file a full application. Remember back in two thousand and seven, we got a million bucks, I think it was two thousand and seven. And then in two thousand and nine, we got almost another eight hundred thousand. Well, these applications also, I think, there might be someplace on there about, you know, what your project, how much people like, so we can kind of get an idea of how much money they, they would ask for. So what I've done so far is, on the, on the city's website, on the, toward the bottom, on, on the right side, there's a link to the application. And so I know, uh, HRA is, is going to have the press, something put in the press, um, uh, as you're out there talking to people, if they think of it, mention it, tell them to go to that site, if they think they've got a project, whether, whether windows, heating cool for businesses, there might be updating their, their, their heating and cooling, or whatever it may be, looks. But pointing to that website, I think, that's the start of it all. We're going to put something in the, uh, in the utility bills, for every household that gets a utility bill, we'll get something that says something about this, this, um, the surveying in this project, because if we can give another million dollars or whatever for HRA to start another, uh, small city development program, and that'll be good. I know that's one of the things that came out of the climate committee's statement in two, so we're already working on the stuff that's going to be in the council. Um, and then the other, the only last thing I want to mention was, I had, I've had a couple of individuals, and this came out in that survey by the, with the, uh, town council committee, too, but there was somebody asking, how do you get ahold of the city council? They don't have phone numbers, they don't have email, they're posted. And I, I want to reach out to one, but I can't get ahold of them. So, you know, I was looking at it and, and the sensor, right, on the city website, here's, um, all the names of the individuals, they're, they're, that's all, that's all here, outside of the mix, who has the email address and the phone number on there. But, uh, and you've all got city email addresses. So because of the couple of individuals that I mentioned this to you, and because of the steering committee survey, um, also pointed out that the city council is not very accessible, I'm going to put on the city website, um, after each one, the name, your city email address, so people can email you if they want. Um, so I don't know how often you guys monitor those, if you've got your devices set up, if something comes in on that one or it's the other one or whatever, but just to let you know, you might, you know, if you don't already monitor, maybe it's the one. I kind of need to tell you guys that way, of, of all you, uh, somebody could do, or whatever. But just so you know, I want you to figure it out, so, I want, I want people to be able to reach you, um, if they want to, about coming to, you know, class today.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Uh, my report probably mirrors twenty-five percent of what Don said. Oh, getting back to the pool, I've, I've spurted my memory. On the south yard of the pool, there's a tight capsule that's buried, will have to be relocated to another location, just to be open, I think, in twenty thirty-three?
Yeah.
Okay. So it was buried there in the hundred, on our centennial, it's only going to happen in fifty years. Okay, um, some of the projects, meetings I've been to in the last couple of weeks, uh, attended a twenty twenty-four Pelican Rapids Complete Street project meeting with Don talked about, and also met with, uh, West Central Turkey personnel and, uh, people service regarding the operations and concerns that they had at the lagoon. I met with Deana Johnson at Historic City Hall regarding volunteer staffing. Uh, she has struggled to find volunteers who were supposedly going to be able to man that city hall in her absence, and it's been very difficult at this time. Uh, I spoke with Prairie Lake Association president regarding concerns of some residents on Prairie Lake. If when we go ahead with our dam removal, we're going to drain Prairie Lake, and I addressed that in my last column. We had engineering, Houston Engineering came up with a, a letter that I, I forwarded to Bonnie Weakland, who is the president of the Prairie Lake Association, which addresses that, talking about all the elevations, and the elevation is not going to change because of the, the fixed, uh, rock formation, and also part of the dam is still in place at Prairie Lake. I met with Oaks Personnel regarding probably some future uses of their organization at the Senior Citizens Building. Speaking of that, we're going to have to rename that building, aren't we? Things are no senior citizens group anymore. I had a phone call with Amanda Hillman of the DNR regarding that same topic about the Prairie Lake, uh, concerns, we remove our dam. I attended a local foods, local places, steering committee Zoom meeting on June seventeenth, and with, uh, Councilman Mark Craft, Administrator Solga, we, we met regarding , uh, police union strategy meeting that's coming up. Uh, attended Pelican Rapids Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting at city hall at, on June seventeenth. Attended the Pelican Rapids Fire Department Budget Committee meeting with Councilman Foster, Administrator Solga. Uh, on invitation, I gave the welcome message at the Friendship Festival in Sharon Park, and also the Glacial Minnesota Woman Organization play at the Fine Arts Auditorium on, both on June nineteenth. Uh, again, I met with Administrator Solga and Brian Corf. I'm, there's just a, not, not less concern, but topics we should discuss mutually between the schools, the city, as Don mentioned, hollum, possibly, uh, transferring Brown Soccer Field to the school and exchange for some other property. So it was just various, various topics, and I think we're going to plan to do that in the future also, just to keep in touch with the school district. Met with, uh, Don and also Brian Olson and Police Chief Statham regarding the Pelican Rapids Complete Street Downtown Project Demonstration. Attended a MeServe annual meeting via Zoom on the twenty-fourth of June. This is just our annual meeting. Uh, they do not meet in person at this time, which is going over the upcoming budgets and what's concerned of municipal wastewater plants at this time. Attended Pelican Rapids Complete Street Project Roundabout Demonstration at West Central Turkey's parking lot on June twenty-fourth. Attended the Open House of the Pelican Market on June twenty-fifth, downtown Pelican Rapids. Attended the Park Board meeting up in Neil Peterson Park yesterday, and then met with Administrator Solga today regarding this afternoon's city council agenda. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Mayor. You said we're going to drain Prairie Lake. Is that accurate?
No, no, that, that was, that was the rumors up there.
Their concern was that.
That was their concern.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just a couple individuals, but it dropped fast.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other business on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
Hold me a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold your say. Motion carried.
Seven eleven, it isn't worse than I thought.
Say what?
Does that recording stop you?
It's not late as I thought it could have gotten.
I agree. Thought it'd be at least seven thirty.
I have a question once that stopped.